There she is. So we're good? Alrighty. We're gonna call to order the Effingham County Commission Board meeting this April 4th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Have a roll call, Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette, absent. Mr. Corbett's here, Mr. DeLoach, he is absent. Mr. Loper?
Here.
And Mr. Kiefer?
Here.
We do have a quorum, that's good. Ask everyone if they please rise for the invocation, and tonight, we want to remember Commissioner Burdette as he was in an accident, many of you might know, and he broke several bones in his back, and I saw him this afternoon, he's recovering, but he's in a lot of pain. So, he crushed one vertebrae completely, and they had to glue it back, so, but hopefully, in a couple of months, he'll be able to be back, but he's, he needs our prayers tonight. So let's go to invocation, and let's pray for our friend Roger Burdette, District 2. Father, we thank you so much for this evening, we thank you for all this family from Effingham County that's here tonight, for these men and these ladies that work in the offices and commission as employees, and all that goes into making Effingham still one of the best places to live in Georgia, if not in America. We thank you for the wisdom that's around this table, but we ask that you give us greater wisdom, that we might hear the discussions, make decisions that are pleasing to you, that are good for our constituents that you've called us to serve. So God is tonight, and we pray that you would raise Roger back up, heal that back, bring him back to us soon, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
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 Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have our agenda before us tonight. Madam Clerk, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a couple. These items are listed under our planning board items. So items, sorry. Wrong agenda. Items number 18 and 19, under the planning board items, for Three Birds Development LLC to rezone 39.46 acres located on Highway 30. The applicant has requested this item be postponed to May 2nd. Additionally, number 23 is a sketch plan for Angela Salz for JMS Storage Facility located at 1355 Fort Howard Road. This item will be postponed to May 2nd as well.
And that's item 23?
Item 23, so it's number 18 and number 19 and 23 under planning board.
And did you say May 2nd as well, or another day?
May 2nd.
Um, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I, I believe that the sketch plan to be postponed tonight was for Carson Company, item 22.
That is correct, I'm sorry.
Okay, item 22.
It is number 22, yes.
Alright, we have our agenda before us with these corrections, we are removing item 18, 19, and 22, or rather postponing them to May 2nd, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those corrections? Does that move?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper. Second by Mr. Floyd to approve the agenda with those corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously, we have our agenda. We have the minutes to approve for March 21st, 2023. I was not here, so I cannot speak to the accuracy, any amendments or corrections to those minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the, the minutes as presented.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Welcome everybody, we got a full house tonight for the meeting. We have the agenda, if you had a copy of it when you came in, if you'd like to make a comment on an agenda item, feel, feel free to do so, keep your comments to two or three minutes, that'll allow more people to speak, because we'll have to cut it off after a certain amount of time, on the speaking part of it. If you want to make any remarks regarding any of the agenda items, please come to the microphone, don't make comments from the chair, we record this, it's important that the clerk get the comments accurately recorded, who's, who made the statements and so forth. So come to the podium, state your name, and then share any comment that you would like to have on the item, on the agenda. All the documents for this meeting are in the clerk's office on our website, and they've been posted, so hopefully, hopefully you've had a chance to review those, and we'll be ready to share when the time comes. We're gonna move down now to our consent agenda, we have one, two, three, four, five items on our consent agenda, I'm required to read these, and I'll receive a motion on all the consent agenda items at one time. Item number one, consideration to approve to renew an agreement for the maintenance of rural land schedules and mythology for 2023 and to 2025 with G, Gmas Incorporated. Item number two is an agreement, consideration to approve renewal of a lease agreement with FP Mailing Services to allow for postage meters at multiple locations. Item number three, consideration to approve a job description for an administrative assistant in the probation department. Item number four, consideration to approve a revised temporary easement agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Effingham County, Georgia, and Cassie Michelle Hindley. And the last item, item number five on the consent agenda is a grant award agreement, consideration to approve, to ratify, and affirm submittal of a grant application and an agreement by and between the Georgia Department of Transportation and Effingham County Sheriff's Office to accept a grant award from GDOT Traffic Incident Management Equipment, that's TIM, T-I-M-E, Task Force Grant Program. That is our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the consent agenda as read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, the consent agenda passes unanimously. And with that, we'll move to our new business. Seven items on the new business, item number one, consideration to approve resolution 23-005 in celebration of Thelma Goldwire's 100th birthday. That ought to get an applause, just the announcement of that. I don't know if Dr. Goldwire would like to speak first, before we make the presentation. Dr. Goldwire, would you like to come make a few comments and speak to your mom's wonderful achievement? My mom's 92, so she's trailing behind you, but she's got a few years to go. And what a great citizen this Goldwire, her family has been for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity, it's a great honor to be here and be present with my mother this afternoon, who will be turning 100 years old in, in just a few days. Let me say that we appreciate all of the support that here today to, to witness this occasion, it only happens once every 100 years, so you want to take advantage of that opportunity, because we don't know if we'll be around to celebrate another 100 years. So, let's say that, want to say that we thank you so much on behalf of her and, and her family, that you have decided and found it befitting to do this today. It's a highlight for her to be recognized at this point in her life, and be able to witness it, and she's excited to be here. Want to tell you just a, two or three things about my mother, she's the mother of 10 children, I'm the fourth of 10, I'm the third son, and she has four daughters and, and four sons, that is, and I'm the third of, of the four sons, of the six sons, that is. She's believed in church and believe in treating others as she liked to be treated. She's sharp as a tack, she does crossword puzzles, and she does a lot of reading and a lot of reciting at church, she loves to ride and go on trips, she goes to Miami, or Washington, or Virginia, or wherever her family is, she'll load up and go. And my sister can tell you a lot of neat things about her, but I know you want to get on with your business today, but she has a real neat way of getting out of the house, and she'll concoct, concoct an idea that this, her van that she ride on needs servicing, or it might need gassing or something, so they can get her out the house, so, she's cunning in, in that way, but she keeps us laughing and she keeps us going. And I just can't say enough again, and I'll cut it at this, that we appreciate you so much for taking the time out to recognize her, and we want to thank her supporters again for being here, and I'd like to give them a hand for being here and inviting them in. I'm sure that a lot of other things we could say, but I understand you're the heart of our business, so I'll cut it off at that. Thank you very much, and we hope that we will be able to get a group shot with her, with you, if, if that's possible.
We'll do it, just a minute with our, with our award, you know, we don't have too many 100-year-old constituents, so that's a very unique status, that's really great. Now, all of her family that's here, brothers, sons and daughters, would you stand as we can recognize you guys? Very good, very good, thank you.
And I know at least one of her daughter's lord, daughter-in-law is here, Cheryl, my wife, she's here with any other. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me say one last thing, then we'll, I want to read, the clerk read the proclamation, but I don't know the whole family, but I do know your son, your third son, you said?
Right.
And he, he is still my wife's favorite principal of all time.
No way.
And it, fruit doesn't fall too far from the tree, so that tells me what kind of quality, beautiful lady you are, when you raise gentlemen like this, so we appreciate you giving us Dr. Goldwire and the rest of his family as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can I get a proclamation for that, or?
You can't. You can't.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna ask our clerk if she'd read the proclamation, and then if the commission would join me down front, if somebody will bring her around with the family that wants to join, we'll get a picture to celebrate this event together.
If we can, yeah, bring her forward.
Yeah, go ahead and bring her forward, that'd be great. Should we go down maybe now, to be around as you give the proclamation?
Can, yes, sir.
You want to come on down? We'll stand with her, and we'll invite the family up in just a minute.
Get them to the front, right in the front.
Give Mark, give you some space to.
Okay. Okay, the resolution reads, recognition of Mother Thelma Roper Goldwire 100th Birthday Celebration. Whereas Mother Thelma Roper Goldwire was born on April 13th, 1923, in Clio, Georgia, to Reverend Walter Roper and Sally Sarah Elizabeth Solomon Roper. Whereas, she married the late Reuben Goldwire Senior in 1941, and 10 children were born, which she adored and cared for and designed and sewed clothing. She now also enjoys 33 grandchildren, 53 great-grandchildren, and 25 great-great-grandchildren. Her love for her family. Her love for her family is her greatest joy. She has traveled long distances for family events, and nowadays, she uses her iPad to FaceTime and Zoom to communicate with her loved ones. And whereas, Mother Goldwire is a member of Union Springs Methodist Church Incorporated in Springfield, Georgia, where she serves as the church mother and participates on the following boards, stewardess, missionary, auxiliary, and women of hope, and she also was a member of the senior citizens choir. And whereas, Mother Goldwire was featured on WTOC TV Hometown Heroes because of her service to the community. When she was able-bodied, she would often be seen driving others to the grocery store, to the doctor appointments, work, and even driving neighborhood students to school if they missed the bus. Driving others to their destination was one of her favorite ways to give back. Now, she enjoys riding around Effingham County, reminiscing of yesteryears, and tracking the county's growth and development. And whereas, Mother Goldwire is a former employee of Effingham Health System, additionally, through the years, belonged to the following organizations, Effingham County NAACP, PTA of Effingham County Schools, Springfield Central High School Association Incorporated, American Cancer Society, Heart Association of America, March of Dimes, and Effingham County Association for Developmental Disabilities. She was instrumental in helping to renovate the old Clio Elementary School located on Fair Street, which became the Effingham Developmental Service Center, which provided programs for the developmentally challenged handicapped citizens of Effingham County. And whereas, Mother Goldwire believes in the value of education for everyone, and always encourages both youth and adults to take advantage of every learning opportunity available. To this day, she proudly displays her certification of graduation from the 7th grade in 1941 from Taylor Chapel School. The completion of 7th grade during her school years were equal to the completion of today's school's 12th grade. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Effingham County, Georgia, joins Mother Thelma Goldwire's family and friends in celebrating her 100th birthday. We stand appreciative of her life's work and her legacy. Further be it resolved, a copy, copy of this resolution will become part of the Effingham County Archives, humbly submitted this 4th day of April in the year of our Lord 2023.
One more picture. Thank you again, gentlemen, so much. Your luck, thanks, Ms. Johnson, for being instrumental in making this happen, thank you, Mrs. Gold. And if you don't mind, we'd like to bid you that her get back on the van and do some more sightseeing.
Dr. Goldwire, what's your actual? So if those who are here tonight, to honor Mrs. Goldwire, would like to dismiss, feel free to dismiss it this time. About 18 more years, we'll be able to recognize Mr. Loper.
Did, did we approve it?
About 82, 81?
No.
Okay, we need to make it official, right?
Yeah.
Did we vote? We need to approve it.
Oh, that's true. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve a resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the resolution as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it's unanimous, resolution is adopted. You gonna pass that around, or just sign it maybe executive session?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be fine. Alrighty, we'll move on with our new business, item number two, consideration to approve an assemblage permit for Sonia Hall Johnson to close a section of Standard Lane on September 2nd, 2023, beginning at 3:00 PM to hold a block party. Map number 366, parcel number 15, comma 56, map number 366B, parcel number 24 to 29, and part, map number 366C, parcel number 9A, 10A, 11B, and I'm not sure what the O1 is there, but on Standard Lane in Third District. Ms. Katie?
Yes, good evening. The applicant is one of a small group of neighbors which wishes to host a block party on Saturday, September 2nd. They are blocking off Standard Lane as it pertains to those parcels listed, and taking care not to block Oakton Drive, and some more densely populated residential side streets. Staff is recommending alternative number one approval with the conditions that I, I did not get an end time from the applicant, so we need an end time, and that there is coordination with the sheriff's office and EOM if necessary for appropriate notification and signage.
Okay, um. I'm not against it, but I have a little bit of concern about setting a precedent, you know, we've done this in neighbor. You know, we've done this in neighborhoods where it's not a through road, but there's a lot of traffic that comes from the mobile home parks back and forth in that direction. I don't know if our attorney's looked at that. A little concerned about closing a through road versus a neighborhood road.
And I think, I'm not sure if there's someone, if the applicant is here tonight.
Is applicant here tonight, would like to speak? Come share with us a little bit. I'm a little bit, I'm for neighborhood parties, but there's a little concern for me that by set a precedent, somebody else might want to close, you know, another through road somewhere sometime.
Okay, good evening. The, um, the road that is to be closed will not disturb any of the, uh, the trailer park that is there. It's only gonna block off four or five of our residents. Uh, and I've spoken with four of them already that they're fine with it.
Well, I was talking about like the mobile home park to the north and then to the south over to nineteen, as they probably are used to going back and forth to one nineteen that way. Um, what's the time period that you want to have it closed off for?
From three to eleven.
Three to eleven. Um, that's a long time.
Well, the, uh, we were hoping to have something for the children there early and then do the, uh, the big block party with everyone. But I mean, if it's concerned of how the timeframe is, everything is not set in stone yet, so.
Um, let the commission speak. I, I think it, lesser hours for being closed, because you're trying to protect the children from what I read, you know, crossing the street and so forth.
Right.
And maybe if it was only closed from three to, and I'd like to hear from Lee, if we're setting a precedent on a through road, two versus a neighborhood, is there any concern there for us? But, um, maybe if it was closed from three to eight, because the children should be, it's gonna be dark then. They shouldn't be crossing the road anyway, probably at that point. That might be something we want to think about, but I'll let the commission.
We do something like this with Royal Oaks at Halloween. They close the roads because there's so much traffic and to try to protect the kids, they'll close that subdivision off. But I think they actually hire a deputy.
That's a subdivision.
Yes, a subdivision.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, because they, yeah, this is a road that people, that aren't part of that subdivision could be just passing through.
With correct, with the right signage, could they get around? I mean.
Yeah, they can, they can actually go out in front of the, uh, old, uh, what's the, uh, school there? What's it called?
Wallace Drive. Yeah, on Central.
Wallace Drive, they go out Wallace Drive. Uh, if you're at, obviously, if you are at the, um, what's that big trailer park? I can't remember the name off now.
Um, there's Standard Lane Trailer Park and there's.
They, they can go out to, uh, nine, one nineteen. They, they have other ways to get out and around. Lee, is there any concern about setting a precedent on a road that's not in a neighborhood? That would concern you as a, our legal advice?
I'd probably need to take a look at it. I'm not certain we've had one like this before. Like you've already pointed out, most have been in subdivisions. Um, this is just a little different. I don't know if that'll matter, but let's just, if you would, let's say we just postpone it, um, table it to the next meeting, just give me a chance to look at it. Because we're talking about it September, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, would you mind if we did, if we motioned to table this, let the attorney look at it? Once again, we do it for neighborhoods because it, nobody's just passing through. You know what I'm saying? And, um, I mean, we can.
Probably set some criteria, you know, set some framework that works, that we can use that going forward, maybe.
That mean we can't do it and can't do it for other roads, but we probably need to be thoughtful about how we do a thorough, a through road.
Okay.
Sheriff, you talk to the sheriff, he might have somebody hang around there for a while, just to keep things straight.
Yeah, that'd be a requirement, I would think, for this, for a through road. We'd have to have a deputy there. There'd be some expense to that if we decide to do that, I'm sure, to make sure. Because even in the rink and parade, even though it was barricaded, somebody came through the barricade on the through road, so.
Right.
Yeah. So let's do that. Can I get a motion to table and give Lee a chance to look at it? Let staff look at maybe some parameters so that if it does come up again, we can be consistent in what we approve? Okay? So we'll try to work with and give you something that you can have a good block party, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. They have a motion to table to the, uh, want to do it for thirty days? That's still a long way from September, that'll give staff plenty of time.
Still move?
Alright, table to May second. And that's by Mr. Loper, all, uh, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Floyd, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, we'll table it to then and try to get some good parameters for future approvals on roads that go through versus neighborhoods. Item number three, consideration to approve a technical service support agreement with a striker for E M S equipment.
Good evening, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. Um, we do currently have a service agreement in place with Striker that does expire at the end of the, at the end of June. Um, so this is a three-year, uh, service agreement to, um, take place after that. Um, it does cover the Life Pack devices, Lucas and Power Cut devices. Um, it also prorates some of our newer items that we've purchased the last couple of years so that they'll come on this, um, when it's time for them to, to join, basically.
No additional cost when they come onto it?
No, it's already prorated on there, um, for when that'll start. This is a lot, uh, it's a good bit less than what we'd approved previously, too. Um, the prior service agreement included, uh, batteries, I believe, um, which Ms. Wanda has said wasn't worth keeping included, um, so she did have that removed.
That makes the price go down a little bit, not including the batteries. Batteries are not that expensive.
Quite a bit, yeah. Um, it's not, not enough to keep it on the, not enough to justify what they were costing us to keep it on the service agreement, if that makes sense.
How much do these beds cost? Were they like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something?
Oh, gosh. Um, the last ones we ordered, um, the stretchers, I think they were about forty thousand roughly. I think we ordered two when it was about eighty.
So how many do we have?
I'm not sure. Um, I'll have to go back and, and ask Ms. Wanda.
I'm just trying to get an idea of what forty-two thousand dollars for, how many beds, you know, if it's.
Um, just those last two that we ordered were that much because they had a different floor plate. Um, they were a little bit fancier than ones we'd ordered previously. I think the ones we ordered prior to that were probably around twenty thousand, if I recall. Um, but I can ask Ms. Wanda to get a, a full list if you want.
I don't know, if the board so desires. I just, I see forty-two thousand dollars for a maintenance agreement, just want to know what they're.
So that's in total for the three years. Um, so the, the annual payments will be fourteen thousand, but, and that covers, uh, there's, there's a list. It should have been in your packet, so a list of the equipment that's covered in that, too.
That's a good bit of, bit, but, okay. Alright, I'll entertain a motion if there's no other questions.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. You know, Allison, just a thought, it, it might be helpful for me in my C P A mind on these type of discussions to have like, what's the cost of the equipment total with the, we're insuring? So I can get a percentage, like it's forty-three thousand for two hundred and fifty thousand, you know? What's been the, how, how many times have they been maintained in the last three years?
Okay.
So I can just kind of get a feel for, and is there another provider? It's always be good to say, and there is no other service provider for this, where that limits our ability to choose, but.
Understood.
A little more information might be helpful to help my numbers mind, anyway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Item number four, consideration to approve a proposal with Vertiv for the uninterrupted power system U P S maintenance agreement.
Yes, sir. So, uh, this is a renewal, um, proposal for the U P S maintenance, um, and these are located at the multi-agency call center, um, the three county radio tower sites, and also at six oh one North Laurel Street. Um, the annual total for this is sixteen thousand seventy-five dollars, and staff recommends alternative one.
Okay, is there any question, discussion?
It's about the same type deal. When you buy this equipment, then they get you in a maintenance agreement to.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I don't have, no, no, I'm just gonna assume you've done your job and dogged out this question, but I think a little more information in the future about recovering a million dollars worth of equipment than, um, this. Now, that doesn't sound too much, you know, but if we're covering fifty thousand dollars of equipment.
Right, understood.
Just a little more financial data would be helpful.
Oh, do you want to?
You got some information?
Yes, Chris Reed, I T. Director. The, uh, U P S units are the, are the units that are supplying power to the three radio towers themselves, along with the whole nine-one-one center and the admin server room. Uh, those units we've had under contract for the last five or six years at least, um, and that's the standard amount that we've been paying. I think there's been a five or ten percent increase every year on that for price.
Are there any other providers of this maintenance?
It's a sole source.
Sole source?
Sole source, yes, sir.
Okay. I know we gotta have the backup.
I think I remember at the end of the life of our previous ones, I think I had a constituent that had an issue and called in, and it literally was in that, had a nine-one-one call, and it was in that window and couldn't get through.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so that's what it does, it fills that gap.
Yeah.
Even though it's a small gap, nine-one-one, it's important.
It's life. Thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion for alternative one.
Sir?
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number five, consideration to approve a change order number two with E and D contracting for contract twenty-two dash twenty-five dash zero zero six for road improvement construction at Freedom Trail.
Yes, sir. So this is, um, just for the Freedom Trail portion of the contract we have in place with E and D. Um, and my understanding is that this is for, um, they need an additional three inches of gab base to be installed prior to the paving. Um, so the total for this change order is thirty-five hundred dollars, and staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions or discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve order number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, new business, consideration to approve the first reading to amend Part Two, Chapter Thirty-four, Flood Damage Prevention, Section thirty-four point five definitions, Section thirty-four point eight-two specific standards, and Section thirty-four point eight-six standards for subdivisions.
Good evening, Teresa Concanan, Planning Manager. Uh, this is a consequence of a recent visit by D N R. to assess our floodplain program, floodplain management program, and this is actually just the review of the regulatory materials. And they made, she, the D N R. representative made suggestions on a few changes, and they are the ones you just read out, those sections, and they're, they're fairly minor. Um, E O M. was present at the community assistance visit, as was the building official. They say these are all standard and won't make any changes in our review or inspection procedures. And then just recently, um, as we're going through the hazard mitigation planning process, the consultants who knew we, we had the community assistance visit and were making these changes, suggested we make two more. One is a typo, uh, to correct that, and also a date change for our flood insurance study. Um, it, the ordinance currently lists a twenty-ten date, and she, they recommended updating it to the most recent flood insurance rate map dates, which is twenty-fifteen. So that's really just a housekeeping matter, and I believe that, that was, um, should have been circulated to you. But that is what we're asking for, is to go ahead and update the floodplain, uh, the flood prevention, flood damage prevention program ordinance so that we can stay in compliance with all FEMA requirements.
This compliance is what helps constituents still get their fifteen percent discount.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very good. Thank you for the explanation, that's very good. Any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Sir?
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr., I mean, Mr. Kiefer. Second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration to accept two road segments and associated right-of-way easements and utility infrastructure consisting of water distribution, wastewater collection, and storm drainage conveyance systems at the Georgia International Trade Center. This is map number four sixty-six D, parcel number one C, and map number four sixty-six D, parcel number eight, in the fifth district.
So this is the, I think, second time we've been asked to accept road segments at Gitsey, and these are two separate segments, they're visible on the plat, that was part of your packet. Uh, and they are, a, as a consequence, there are also two separate deeds and two separate bonds because that, the land under those roads is, is actually under different ownership. But this is standard and, and according to the planned development document that was approved for the Gitsey, um, development site. Staff have reviewed the plat, uh, E O M. has inspected and recommends, um, acceptance. And they also reviewed the bond recommendations, and they are both for ten percent of the construction costs for the respective segments. County attorney has reviewed and approved the warranty deed as to form, and staff are recommending number, alternative number one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussions for Ms. Teresa? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, we might go ahead and have our reports from our commission and staff, and if we have time before our other, we'll go into exec session.
I, um, the only thing I wanted to bring up, just a reminder that we did wrap up, uh, our department meetings on budget. Um, and we have a little bit of a tight schedule, just, um, uh, with board members being out of town, uh, to have our, to have our meetings with the individual commissioners. So we, um, we hope to be sending out those invites by the end of this week, uh, so we can see if we can schedule something next week.
Very good. Uh, Tim Addig, discussed with a couple of our commissioners, and one being Roger, who can't be here tonight as well, um, regarding when we approve a zoning
Mm-hmm.
and sketch plans, and something takes place and they start building, what's the process to be sure that, um, the wetlands, the, uh, green space, the off-street parking, the facilities, the recreational areas?
Buffers.
The buffers, the natural buffers, the planted things that we've required are all done before we give a certificate occupancy? Is that something?
Well, it's, i, i, and, and, and most of what you're saying probably would, uh, would come actually in, uh, before we, uh, accepted the final plat, um, before we actually, um, before they began construction. Um, we, we usually have them address all concerns with regards to buffers. Some of that process does not wait till final plat, uh, where we'll have inspections, uh, on-site, uh, to make sure that during construction they're meeting it. Because once you take down a buffer, uh, buffers are supposed to be undisturbed, undisturbed. So, um, you know, we want to make sure they're not, um, uh, disturbing it at all during the process, and we'll do that. Uh, our contracted partner, uh, E O M. handles, uh, the site review and site inspections. Uh, and then, but, um, the items that you had mentioned, uh, parking, um, sidewalks, buffers, uh, all of that, uh, gets addressed prior to, uh, a recommendation for accepting, uh, the infrastructure and the final plat.
A, and I'm just concerned that, do we even need to give certificate occupancy? For example, you're gonna build two hundred units, and it requires a recreational facility and a certain amount of green space and off-street parking and so forth. Maybe the recreation facility doesn't get built, or the pavilion doesn't get built because they want to wait till they get so many units. But I think our board anticipates they'd build that early, so, to ensure that it's there. Uh, because they may build up a hundred and fifty homes, and we still don't have the recreation. They say, well, we're gonna do that when we finish. But that didn't meet what we were really looking for, to keep the children, you know, off the streets and where they need to be to have the quality of development. Do you follow what I'm asking there?
Yeah, and so, I mean, I will say, um, you know, as a general rule, uh, we're impro, we're approving the sketch plan as a whole for the entire development, uh, and then we approve, um, the final plats as phases of that. Uh, and so if in those phases there's infrastructure that's to be built in there, um, we will make sure that that is being built at that time. Um, but if at a future phase, uh, is, you know, additional amenity infrastructure, then we'll address that at the, you know, at the time, uh, of the, of that. But to your point, for the, um, uh, if it's an actual construction of a structure, um, uh, we would probably, um, have some sort of an agreement with them uh, that if that structure is not built at the time that we accept the final plat, uh, that there would be some sort of an agreement of a timeline when it will be built. Uh, because we understand that, um, you know, nothing really is above ground, uh, at the time of final plat. Uh, but, um, you know, it, uh, you know, we, we can, just like this evening, uh, you know, we got a bond essentially for warranty on some of the infrastructure we received. Uh, you know, we could get some sort of bond or some sort of protection to make sure uh, that these additional requirements, which are recent, um, in the, uh, in the new ordinance, uh, are met within a timeframe.
Yeah, and so might be in our next workshop, maybe a little presentation, a few minutes showing what, what that looks like, so we know how that process is going, what clawbacks do we have that could make sure these things get done, that, that they're being reviewed and, um, because we got a lot of development obviously coming up, and we just want to make sure that there's a lot of work, like you said, done in the R three, the R five, trying to get rid of the R six to make better construction, better quality. of the R6 to make better construction, better quality, better amenities for, we'll make sure all those things do happen before they have certificate occupancies, maybe even. Maybe, might need SOP on what's the process.
Right.
Something to think about. So we can talk about it more. I'm going to make sure we brought that up tonight.
Okay.
Phil, do you want to add anything to our discussion you and I had about, could we discuss that a little bit?
I think, thank you. You covered it.
Okay. Alright. Anything else from management?
No, that's what I got.
Sounds good. Over here. Anybody?
I have something.
Alright. I'll come to the commission in a second. Clerk?
Okay.
Alright. We'll start. Mr. Edg, you go ahead.
Highway Stillwell, Springfield, Stillwell Road. It's about seven different speed restrictions through there. And the highest one is in front of Webb's Feeding Seed Store.
Okay.
It's like a main stream through there. And it's 55 miles an hour. The only place on the road, it is 55 miles an hour. And it's the busiest place on that road.
Okay.
Coming from log land and come down it, back and forth. And it is some kind of busy. You can't get in and out.
Because of the speed of the vehicles.
Down to 35 miles an hour.
Okay. Yeah. So we'll do that, I think, every, every year. And so that's something.
But it's been busy for years.
Yeah. We can tell them to review the speed of that road to try and get reduced in the, in the speed survey that we send into GDOT. I'll talk to the sheriff about that. Because the issue, we can change the trap, we can change the speed limit. But whether or not we can enforce it via radar is what has to be approved by the state. So, so.
Somewhere it's 35 mile an hour through there.
I, I know. And it bounces back and forth.
Forty-five, and 55 is right where it needs to be, 35.
Right.
And Tim, I know the sheriff has the equipment, because I heard a deputy speak at our Rotary Club this past week, about putting a piece of equipment and they can tell the speeds and times of all the vehicles coming through, their average speed.
That's right.
Probably good for the board just to ask the sheriff to put that out there and give us the data, you know?
Okay.
People are traveling, you know?
Yeah. I did that recently. I think we did that to McCall, if I recall, recently.
If he can gather the data, that'll help us as a board to really know how to address it. That'd be great. Anything else, Mr. Loper?
That's all.
Phil?
I'm good. Thank you. Covering that.
Alright. I think what we'll do is we'll, we have a need for a brief executive session. We can't start the public hearings till 6 o'clock. So we have a motion to go into executive session, discuss personnel, property, and pending litigation. Have a motion?
Make a motion to go into, go into executive session to discuss personnel, property, and pending litigation.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, we are in executive session. We will be back at 6 o'clock to start our public hearings. If you're here for public hearings tonight, we can't start them before that time.
Mr. Chairman, if you can announce those items that were postponed.
Yeah. If you, if you came for item number 18 and 19, which is a public hearing related to Three Birds Development LLC zoning, rezoning 39.46 acres, located highway 30 from AR1 to R3 to allow for a 213-unit multifamily residential development. That has been postponed to May 2nd, 2023, at the developer's request. So we will not be hearing that tonight. So if you're here for that project, you might want to go ahead and dismiss. And then if you're here for the planning board, where they recommended denying the application by the Carson Company Unlimited LLC for approval of a sketch plan for Baker Hill, located on Augusta Road between Chimmy Road and Carone Drive, Zone AR1, we will not be hearing that sketch plan tonight. That's been postponed. The zoning, I think, is related to that property is still on here. So if you're here for the zoning, that property will be heard tonight with zoning, but not the sketch plan. That's only three changes to the agenda. If you're here for those three items, you can look to May 2nd. We'll be hearing those on May 2nd. So we're going to go to executive session for about a few minutes, and we'll be back in just a minute.
Hello, hello, hello. Sorry, just testing. Sorry, guys, excuse me. Oh, thank you. Let's see. I brought the mic. It's that other door, miss. It's that one over there. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Test one, two. Test one, two. Test one. A little bit too loud.
Okay.
Hey, I have it. That's how I usually test it, because I can't tell. Hello, hello, hello.
While we're waiting for our commission to come back to the bench, we'll make sure that if you're here tonight for item number eighteen or nineteen, which is the thirty-nine point four-six acres on Highway thirty from AR one to R three, this is in the first district, that has been postponed to May second. So if you're here for those items, then we'll be hearing on those items tonight. And there is a overflow room in the training room. There's a big screen, or maybe two, I don't know, but the sound is pretty good there. If you, if there's somebody that needs to be over there, that's fine, too.
Can you turn it up? Where's the microphone? Can you hold it here?
Can you turn it up a little? Can you hear me now? Do you like this every once in a while, and I'll lean into the microphone? I'll try to lean in. Waiting on our clerk. I don't think she, I think she stepped out. Excuse me. Microphone's working now. Stephanie said where she was going. We need our clerks, and she records everything, so we gotta wait till she returns. Lee, since I keep notes about the motions, can we move forward? Because, in case she's delayed for a reason we don't understand?
Give it a couple more minutes.
You what?
Your wife is fixing a ham.
And you know where it is?
I went inside today. Went inside, he was excited. He likes ham.
He was?
Yeah.
We went over there and bought a bunch of stuff.
If anybody wants to help provide a divorce, I'll get pens or something. They, they could use some meals. He says he's like a big baby. She's helping take care of him.
We, we taking him, we taking him something tomorrow.
He was excited about that.
I went and got him today and bought him. He likes ham. I don't know. She don't cook, I'm gonna take it to him. And we'll do it again, I mean, you know.
That's great. He was appreciative. All right. Do we have a motion to go back into regular session? Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Floyd, to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, we are back in regular session, and we're moving to our planning board items. The first item on the planning, public hearing, says a planning board recommends approving an application by Jeffrey Fordham and Jeffrey Fordham as agent for Lois and Otto Diederich to rezone three point nine acres located at one ninety-seventh Avenue, Meldrum, to allow for a recombination of adjacent parcels from AR one to AR two. This is map three thirty, parcels number nineteen G and twenty-three G in the first district. Ms. Katie?
Yes. What the applicant wishes to do here is very simply just to move this property line so that it fully encloses an existing metal building. So if you can see here, this building, so it's moving this property line. These are two non-conforming AR one lots together. They only combine three point nine acres. So if we're moving the property lines, it needs to be rezoned. Staff is recommending alternative one approval.
Okay, thank you. We open a public hearing. Is anyone tonight speaking in favor or in opposition? We'll start with those in favor of this rezoning. Anyone speaking in opposition to this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion or any questions from the board.
This is pretty straightforward, I believe. I make a motion, we approve the request with planning board and staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper, to approve with planning board and staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number two is a second reading related to this item. Consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Jeffrey Fordham and Jeffrey Fordham as agent for Lois Otto Diederich to rezone three point nine acres located at one ninety-seventh Avenue, Meldrum, to allow for a recombination of adjacent parcels from AR one to AR two. Map number three thirty A, parcel number nineteen G and twenty-three G in the first district. Motion to approve the second reading.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper, to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number three, under public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Dell A. Jackson as agent for Earl Wayne Tomlinson to rezone five point eight acres located at four sixteen Lehigh Circle to allow for a homestead from AR one to AR two. Map number four oh six A, parcel number seven in the third district. Katie?
In this case, the applicant is looking to create a home site by obtaining this one point three-two acres to create a home site for his daughter. This is in, excuse me, Lehigh Acres, which is a subdivision. However, the proposed division of the parcel is in keeping with size and use of the rest of Lehigh Acres. There have been a few rezonings approved here, including most recently on this cul-de-sac. Staff is recommending alternative one approval.
All right, we open a public hearing. Is there anyone tonight speaking in favor of this rezoning request? Anyone tonight that would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
Make a motion to approve alternative number one.
On second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer, to approve alternative number one. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. So we'll have the second reading of this item. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Dell A. Jackson as agent for Earl Wayne Tomlinson to rezone five point eight acres located at four sixteen Lehigh Circle to allow for a homestead from AR one to AR two. This is map number four oh six, parcel number seven in the third district. Motion to approve the second reading?
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Floyd, to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. Item number five, under public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Joseph R. Davis as agent for Shirley Y. Davis to rezone six point four of fifty point seven-two acres located on Stillwell-Clywell Road to allow for a recombination of adjacent lots from AR one to, and R one, to AR one and AR two. This is map number four twenty-two, parcel number three, and four A in the third district. Ms. Katie?
This recombination and re-subdivision is a result of estate planning, planning for the Davis family. Probably the simplest way to show you would be right here. They're starting off with one large AR one parcel and one smaller R one parcel. They're moving a number of property lines. The R one's being combined with some AR one, and then some AR ones being carved off here. None of the, neither of the two parcels being created are large enough to meet the criteria for the AR one zoning district, so they must be rezoned to AR two. Staff is recommending approval.
Seems pretty straightforward. Is anyone tonight speaking in opposition or in favor of this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for the board.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper, to approve alternative one. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. That'll move us to the second reading for this item. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Joseph R. Davis as agent for Shirley Y. Davis to rezone six point four fifty point seventy-two acres located on Stillwell-Clywell Road to allow for a recombination of adjacent lots from AR one and, and R one to AR one and AR two. Map number four twenty-two, parcel number three, and four A in the third district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper, to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, under public hearing, the planning board recommends approving an application by Wesley Newrath. Request a variance from section three point three point two A, which restricts placement of secondary building on property before a primary structure is in place. Located on Neely Road, zone AR two, map number four sixty-one, parcel number twenty-seven C in the fifth district.
The applicant is seeking to put an accessory structure on an AR two lot without the placement of a dwelling or other primary structure. This is only allowed in AR one on lots of five acres or more. There are some concerns with the site, as it does show wetlands present in the wetlands layer. There is also, the application for building permit was for one sixty-one Neely Road, which is actually the applicant's property behind the one in question, where there would likely be room for the accessory structure.
So the building permit was not even requested for this particular lot?
That is correct. It was identified through the site plan and conversation with the applicant. That is, however, where he wishes to place it. The planning board recommended approval with staff conditions, including that new site plan featuring a designation by a certified wetland specialist be provided, and that the accessory structure may not be used for any type of commercial operation. Staff had recommended denial.
Let me ask you a question before we go to public hearing with this, just to, might help the public, it helps me as well. The, the blue circle there is, and the house in front of that's owned by the same person, which is the applicant.
The applicant owns, correct, the, the at least parcel.
If they combine those lots into one lot, then they could build a secondary structure behind it. Because it'd be one lot, it'd be behind the house.
It would be forward of the house, because the house is addressed to Neely Road, which is down here. And this is the applicant's home.
Did we come up with, I'm just trying to get some clarity before I go to public hearing. Did we come up with something about a, because that would be a pretty large lot then? Ten acres or more. We came up with something about the secondary structures and the placement, if it was big enough?
AR one.
Five acres or more.
I thought we did something, because I remember someone came wanting to build a building, but, and we said, you know, they ought to be able to do that, because they got so many acreage, it's not gonna impact. I get on a five acre land, you don't want to have a secondary structure in front that's gonna hurt constituents around it. But when you get ten, fifteen, twenty acres, I thought we did something on that. We didn't?
We, we did discuss that, and I think we, we ended up settling, if it wasn't AR one, that, that we would go through the, the variance process, so at least we could take a look.
Has to be AR one, then go through a variance process.
It was AR one or AR two, five acres or more, it could be in the front yard.
As long as it met a fifty-foot front setback.
And so if they combine those lots, would it, would it qualify for something like that, or there it's possible?
It, it would be just under, it would be about four and a half acres.
Did anybody oppose this? That's all family property back there, I believe.
No, sir. No one, no one came out to speak.
I just want to get the facts on it, because I knew we did something to address where you could put a ha, a structure in front of a house, beside a house versus behind it. I knew we addressed that at one point. And it's five acres or more, we could, and four point five is pretty close.
It's pretty close, and this is pretty rural. And the other property, controlling it over there is power company property.
One where he wants to put the structures two and a half, and the one behind it is two point zero one.
That helps us clarify where we were and what we've been trying to work on. Are we gonna open a public hearing now? Anyone tonight speaking in favor of this request? You're free to come to the microphone, state your name and share what you're hoping to do.
Yeah, I'm in favor of doing it. It is family land. How y'all?
We need his name, Mr. Chair.
What's, what's your name?
Wesley Newrath.
Right. Okay, very good. Yeah, I'm not saying I have any opposition to it, I just, because I knew we had an issue with this in the past. That's when I was getting clarified, where we felt like a constituent should be able to do this, but the requirements didn't allow it, and so we've got some leeway to work with this.
And also got a copy of the PERT test, of the whole land being high blant and blant and land, it's not wetlands. And there's a bay in there, but I'm not putting a building in the bay. You know what I'm saying?
Right, gotcha.
This is a pole barn?
It's a metal building. That's all it's a shop. You see it? No sewers, no wells, just a metal building.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the reason for denying was because it, it did meet the acreage, and it's no other structure on the facility. So it's just strictly going by what the current ordinance says. Gotcha.
And I think we left it where they're, just to go through the variance process on AR two to allow the neighbors, but obviously the neighbors don't, you know, have issues.
Right. Well, let's, anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this request? Okay, I don't see anyone speaking in opposition to it. But I appreciate what the staff was trying to do. We always want you to give us the letter of the law, and then we have some leeway if we look at the, the area and what's, the size and what's going on. and what's the size and what's going on. Any other, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Any other discussion from the board? Comments or, or motion?
Yeah, I, now I make a motion to approve alternative number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one, which is approval. I've allowed you to do that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So we can go ahead and do the second reading. Consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Wesley Newrath. Request a variance from section 3.3.2A, which restricts placement of secondary buildings on property before a primary structure is in place, located on Neely Road, zone AR2, map number 461, parcel number 275C in the fifth district.
Make a motion to approve alternative, I'm sorry, approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Floyd to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. I would like to reflect the record that the property applicant owned the property in front where they had a residence, and the acreage combined would qualify. It's a very rural area. I don't want to look like we did this without any justification.
You just like that noted in the minutes section, sure.
Just noted in the, that's why the, the board considered what the staff recommended and appreciate sticking by the letter, but based on those nuances, we thought it best to approve it.
So it's approved, I can go forward?
You can go forward.
Good to go.
I think there's some requirements you gotta jump through about the land and where it's going to be, get with the staff on the building of it, but that's administrative, yeah, that's all, just the administrative things, but the, the approval to build it is there. Where is going to have to work out with them, okay? Thank you, all right. Item number nine. The planning board recommends approving an application by Christian Hale for a conditional use for a rural business located at 1173 Highway 21 North to allow for an automotive shop, map number 366, parcel number 40 in the third district.
This, this item is immediately followed by our request for a variance, so I'm just going to, for the same project, I'm just going to speak about them together. The applicant is requesting a conditional use for a rural business to operate a small-scale automotive repair business from the property. This was actually, this parcel was, 0.5 acres of it was rezoned B3 in 1997. The conditions of the rezoning were not met, so it was reverted to AR1 in 2008. Since its zoning to B3 though, it has been used pretty much continuously as an active automotive shop and was sold to the applicant as such. Staff act, this is actually a staff-referred code enforcement complaint because there was some accumulation of vehicles on the property. Otherwise though, there's no record of any other complaint from the property or from the running of the business. It meets all the criteria for a rural business except for the three-acre minimum for a rural business, which is what the variance request is for. Staff is recommending alternative one approval.
So in my mind, a summary is it was zone R3, if you did certain things that they didn't do. But it's been used as R3, so this is cleanup on aisle six, where if we do a rural business for this person who bought it, understanding it was B3, they'll have it for the life that they run a rural business, but once that rural business goes away, the next business can't buy it and say, we want to put a business here without complying. Is that right?
That, that is exactly it. The conditional use will be specific to this owner and this property. This is far preferable, especially since at this time he would not be able to meet B3 offers and he doesn't have.
Particularly if we have, if we don't have any constituents that are really complaining of this, I think if we can work something that gets the buyer and the seller and get them on a good page and for the life of this rural business. So we'll open a public hearing and see if there's anyone that's speaking in opposition to this rural business request. Anyone tonight that's in concern and speaking in opposition to this rural business request? I think staff and board are just trying to help some folks put some things together for a brief period. All right, I don't see anyone speaking against it, and I'm assuming the person who's asking for it is, is, is good with the rural business? Okay, because that'll, that'll bring in compliance. Okay, all right, hearing, hearing that, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve all number one.
We, we are, and I'm, and I'm, I'm fine. So we're, we're approving rural business on a B3?
No, 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 it, it never.
I'm confused.
It reverted back.
Clarify.
I see.
They, they, they applied for B3, but there were conditions on that.
They never, they were never met, so we reverted back. Gotcha.
But they've been using it as a B3, it was sold as a B3. We're going to clean it up as a rule so that this gentleman can use it for the life of his business.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, I didn't understand.
Rural residential, whatever it is.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve this rural business conditional use. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So we'll do the second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Christian Hale for a conditional use for a rural business located at 1173 Highway 21 North to allow for an automotive shop, map number 366, parcel 40 in the third district. Motion to approve second reading?
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number 11, the planning board recommends approving an application by Christian Hale's request a variance from 3.15B, which requires a minimum of three acres for rural business condition use. Approval located at 1173 Highway 21 North, map number 366, parcel number 40 in the third district. So this is a variance from the three-acre requirement. Is there anyone tonight that would like to speak in a public hearing against this variance of the three-acre requirement? Seeing no one speaking against it, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
Motion to approve the, uh, variance from, of, of less than three acres. Okay, motion to approve the variance by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimous. Now the second reading is the se-
Second reading's coming up.
That's right, that's right, because I get, I, usually I'm behind, so that's fine. Consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Christian Hale request a variance at section 315B, which requires a minimum of three acres for rural business conditional use approval. Located at 1173 Highway 21 North, map number 366, parcel number 40 in third district. Motion to approve second reading?
Okay, second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, second reading's approved, and you're good. Item number 13, under public hearings, the planning board recommends denying an application by Bryant Legion Bird Land and Investment GP as agent for T and T9G LLC to rezone 288.36 acres located on Midland Road from AR1 and I1 to R3 and R5 to allow for a 549-unit single-family and multifamily residential development, map number 396, parcel number 62A in the second district. This item was postponed from 3/7/23. Before we begin discussing this item, I want to start with, is, is Katie going to give us, Teresa? I saw that Jane's positions there. Give us the history and information. We are missing two commissioners tonight. One is in that district. As you know, he broke his back. But I, I decided I want to go ahead and have a public hearing because I knew there'd be a lot of folks that would want to speak tonight. But we will probably at the end of that public hearing, and hearing from both sides, postpone it till Roger can get back to the bench, hopefully in 30 days. If not, we'll try to phone him in. But I think he and, and Mr. Deloche probably need to be here to hear the comments as well. But it would help me as a chairman, I think these members, to have at least a 15 or 20-minute hearing tonight so we could hear some of the input that we can start considering. Sound okay? So we won't be making a decision tonight. We feel like we need a full board where we can make those kind of decisions. So I'm going to go ahead and listen to our staff to give a report, and then we'll start with those who are in favor to explain what they're trying to do, and then we'll listen to some of our constituents on any issues they may have for or against.
All right, I've jumped ahead to the zoning layer here because there is an, a parcel, the parcel in red with the, this one here, was rezoned in 2020 for surface mine. That, that project was not pursued, so that zoning's been kind of hanging out there ever since. So it's not an active industrial side or surface mine. It's, it's, it's essentially AR1 land. So these are the parcels, this one here and then this one here, so I'm going to go back now.
Yeah, my understanding, there's been no surface money at all.
That, that is what we've been told. There's been no surface mine, no state permit has been pursued. So the proposal is for a 549-unit development, which will include 140 family, multifamily units and 409 single-family units. They, they will be served by county water sewer and reuse, and extensions of those utilities will be the responsibility of the developer. The gross density, overall density of those 549 units on the 288 acres is about 1.9 units per acre, so two units per acre. It's a overall, you know, fairly low density, but it is proposed to be very compactly built. The wetlands running in the center there are creating, you know, the division and creating the, the need for this sort of conservation subdivision. And if you see back here, these are the larger lots, and then those sort of smaller lots, and then the townhome lots. And the proposal is to take one, a single entrance then down to Midland Road. That's the only frontage on Midland that, that this parcel or collection of parcels has. And this is also extensive wetlands too, so the design follows the, the natural features. There is, oh, this is a rezoning, but because it's in our R5 and R3, the recently revived zoning districts, we, we took them through kind of a, a sketch plan process too, so that they're ready to go if this is approved. And this concept, this exhibit is, is very, very close to sketch plan level as far as detail. So we've talked through the open space requirements, we've talked through the, the road width, you know, the proposing 28-foot road paving width, which would allow for parking on one side. There will be signage, of course, that will tell people where to park. This, because of the scale, did trigger a regional review, and we sent that off, the information off to the regional commission. They returned a report. The report is not a finding. It's really just a collection of information based on the regional plan, which actually views this area as rural, as does our county future land use map and comprehensive plan. It views this area as rural because even a few years ago when that comp plan was being developed, we didn't foresee the interest in developing on, you know, in this area. We just didn't see that coming, and here it is. And as you know, the future land use map is being revised at this time. Portions of the parcels are in the flood zone A, so we will, you know, the applicant will have to go through FEMA for a letter of map provision based on fill if, if, if and when, you know, this does proceed. The planning board heard a good deal of discussion about the people's feelings about this relating to traffic. And one thing that we didn't confirm that night but can confirm now is that there are roundabouts planned at Midland and Highway 30, as well as Midland and Blue Jay Road, so it, concerns about being stuck behind long lines of traffic, you know, can be laid that way. And we've provided that information to the applicant. They've also actually submitted some more information about distances from the, where are they? I think it was submitted, it should have been in your application packet, and I think Katie broke into a different version. All right. Do you have the exhibits that show the distances from? There, I have, hard copies here, but the planning board, there was discussion about distance between the houses here to the adjacent properties, so there was some concern about that. And, and the applicant has provided exhibits that, that show the measurements, so if you'd like them, I can send them out. But they were, you did provide, okay, the clerk has provided them, all right. And basically, that's all we have to say. Staff are recommending approval, and the applicant is here to speak.
Let me see what page that packet is.
It's not in your packet, but you should, you should have it there. You don't have it there on your desk.
No, I have it on my desk. So yeah, I want to hear a copy of that.
So there's two sets, and I'll pass them separately. This is the measurements on one side, and then I have another. These are the measurements down on the other side.
Can you email it to me?
I, this is Katie.
Are there two copies?
There's extra, a lot of those copies, if you can grab a little.
Yeah, I was going to put it on the board.
I had it on the slide. It's just using a different version.
How did I end up with more?
So, share with me what we're looking at here.
Can you, can you explain what you're, babe?
I, I'm going to pull up a different version. I have a different PowerPoint that I have them on, so let me go find that.
It's going to have this on, so I can see it. That'd be great.
It should be, but... No, I don't have it, I'm afraid.
So, tell me, tell me what we're looking at, because this is not going to be the only hearing we're going to have, so.
Okay.
We can always present this later.
So what you're looking at is, there's two sheets. One of them shows the, the north view, and one shows the south view. And I'll just sort of, so one is the measurements from these houses to property, well, it's a long, one long parcel to the north. And then one show, any residence. And then the other sheet, exhibit shows measurements, sample measurements along the south boundary.
I see what you're saying, so the development here, the red lines are showing the distance between the next actual house.
Yeah, yeah. On the night of the planning board hearing, there was some concern, I know that applicant, or the neighbor to the north, well, northeast, this is a pretty wide tract. It's at least 1,000 feet, I think, or more. And he was concerned about actually firing his, his, his guns out there and was concerned that he would now be restricted because he, if he were in within 900, 300 yards of a residence. And that is actually an ordinance requirement or prohibition against firearms with, firing up firearms within 300 yards of a occupant residence without explicit approval of that resident. So he was concerned about that. His parcel is, I can't remember the exact measurement, she's not there. But it did seem like if someone in this area, his concern was that these people could effectively kind of shut down his practice.
Goureti exercised his current rural rights, like we do at my house. If you want to shoot to where I burn them, we could do it.
Yeah, and if he's here tonight, he can explain that. So that might have been one of the reasons for the exhibit. And to this, to the south side then, southeast.
Okay.
It shows the distance to those houses.
I understand what we're looking at.
Yeah, so I don't know that there was a, in, in any event, there was also concern expressed about the fact that there was a single entrance, and that is a function of the, the property owners up here were not, are not willing to sell to make, you know, to add to this development, so there is, that's the only frontage available. And there, so there's no way to add another entrance. There is however, plans for stubout, so they did include stubouts to adjacent parcels that are not currently developed, which is not at all a requirement that those adjacent parcels be developed, but, but it's, it's an option in the future if more intensive development occurs that, that they could connect and that this development could gain access then to other roads, potentially, to a better network. So that's, that's why that, we have that ordinance requirement, that we have stubout requirements, because it does allow for future connectivity if that is how the development goes.
And this is for an R3 and an R5, not, not a, not a PD?
It is not a PD.
What, what's confusing to me is how do you distinguish, just fact information before we head to public hearing so I can hear it in the right ear. Are you going to draw areas off? This is going to be R3 area, this is going to be R5 area?
Yes, we, we've had that conversation, and, and we did discuss PD. We will have to have a plat that is dividing, and we're probably at the final plat stage, showing us the difference.
The lineage, exact, 42 degrees, whatever, and 45 surveyed lines and everything. Can we really do- Forty-two degrees, whatever, and 45 surveyed lines and everything, can we really do a zoning, do we have that? How do you have a zoning on a piece of property, you don't even know what it is?
Well, I mean, you essentially be, essentially, we've had split zoning on properties before, and so that's essentially how would we, how we'd be doing it, it would just simply show up on the map as two different, as essentially two different parcels, maybe a parcel A and a parcel B.
I I'm saying, how can you do that until you know what the delineation is, though, should that survey not already be done? I can see that you take a.
Well, they they would have to provide it to us, for sure.
We don't have it tonight, though.
That, no, we don't have it tonight, that is number one condition, subdivision recombination plat must be provide, approved by Development Services and be recorded.
And keep in mind, they, they, my understanding is they don't own the parcel, right, this is due diligence, right?
I believe this is due diligence.
Yeah, so this is due diligence, so they can't split out the parcel in advance, so they they would be required, if this were to approve, to then at that point do the delineation and separation of the parcel and and provide us, and make sure that both parcels meet the zoning requirements.
And that's not abnormal, we.
No, no, that happens all the time.
Yeah. All righty, that helps me understand where we're, what we're discussing better than what I just read in the documents. We're gonna open a public hearing, I'm gonna ask those who are speaking in favor, first of all, to come forward and share the project and explain it to us.
Hi, good evening, my name is Travis Burke, I work with Coleman Company here in Savannah, Georgia, representing the cornerstone capital development folks tonight for this rezoning request. I guess the the first thing I just would like to point out tonight is, you know, we're just requesting a use only at this point in time. You know, as as Mrs. Concanon had pointed out, as a part of the application process, we are required to provide a concept plan to help demonstrate how the property could be developed, you know, where the density would be, what the access points could be, that sort of thing. But, you know, that that is not as what's being considered tonight, that is just kind of some supplemental information. I think a lot of concerns that were brought forward at at planning and zoning may have been relative to the plan. You know, this is the first step in a long process, if we are granted this, these two uses that we're proposing on the property, then we have to come back with a sketch plan approval, a much more detailed plan, although we did provide a pretty detailed concept plan. But as we've heard concerns and understand more about the property, going through our due diligence, you know, I think that plan's probably gonna look a little bit different than what we presented tonight far as accommodating access and open space and drainage and and those sorts of things, the further we would go down through this process. The two zonings that that we are requesting are the R5 and the R3 zoning. You know, we we chose these because recently the the county has revised these zonings, actually created the R5 district is is new. And this was, you know, done in a response to some of the concerns that have been going on with these types of developments within the county, the parking and the access along the streets and the open space and the usable amount of open space and and that. So, you know, we looked at this and said, well, look, the county already knows what they want, they've put this in a new ordinance, they spend time crafting this, so this is the path that we chose to take for that purpose. Same thing with the R3 zoning, you know, there's development standards there that address the the building type, the separations, the number of units that can be in a building. And so, you know, again, you know, you guys have updated these ordinances based on what you've seen and liked and what you didn't like, so we felt like that was a a path forward that that we chose in lieu of of going for a PD zoning. You know, a lot of the concerns that that were brought for, forward at P&amp;Z had to do with traffic, drainage, utilities, schools, and and really just the overall density of the project. And I'll just take a couple minutes to briefly talk about some of these, I'm not gonna go into a whole bunch of detail. So if I'm understanding correctly, are we gonna have another public hearing when the other council members are available? Or will it be regular business at that time?
They'll have the ability to hear the comments tonight, so we're not gonna try to repeat what you're doing or what the constituents.
I didn't know if I needed to kind of, if I need to go through everything or if we're doing this again.
They'll have access to be able to watch and hear what was said tonight, but I want them on the bench to be able to respond and speak to it at the next public hearing, so.
Yes, sir, no, I understand.
We'll be in another public hearing, we won't rehash everything we do tonight.
Okay, so just kind of go through some of the concerns, you know, traffic seemed to be one of the main ones. There were really two main issues, there was access, and then, of course, the existing traffic patterns and the issues at the existing intersections today. You know, far as our access goes, as Ms. Concanon had pointed out, we've got very limited access to Midland Road. We don't have a whole lot of frontage, and what we do is really wet, so there's just really one corridor in there that was created to to gain access to this property from Midland Road. And understanding that 550 units is a lot for for a single access point. So, you know, since our planning and zoning hearing, we have been looking at other alternatives, other access points, really. Collichamley is the only really true viable solution to that, and we've been looking at some, you know, opportunities there and working with some adjacent property owners. After that, we came back and met with county staff again to kind of discuss the access issue, and it indicated that we thought we may have a path forward back out to Collichamley. And county staff indicated that, you know what, they they do not prefer having this as a full access point on the Collichamley, that it would serve great as an emergency ask, access for first responders, fire, EMS, be gated with a Knox lock. The only folks that would be able to utilize that would be first responders in the event of of an emergency. They felt like, you know, trying to keep the traffic all out to Midland Road would be best for the current traffic patterns out there. So we were pursuing that second emergency access point. You know, the other concern, again, is is with the existing traffic. You know, one of the first things we did when we started looking at the property is we hired a local traffic engineer to do a TIA to understand the traffic patterns, and it basically said everything that the folks, you know, in the neighborhood and surrounding areas came out and talked about at the planning and zoning meeting. You know, Highway 30 and Midland Road in the mornings taking that left is is all but impossible. Blue Jay and Midland Road is the same thing, it was very congested during the AM and PM peak hours. You know, at the time, we did not realize that there were actually some, the county was aware of this, and and with the T-SLOSS funds, we're already planning on improving these intersections with with roundabouts. Our TIA, when we did it, we looked at what could be improved there. You know, unfortunately, because the the main conflicting movements are just in a couple of directions, that they don't qualify for signalization, so really a roundabout was the only solution. And looking at the analysis of what the roundabouts would do at those intersections, you know, today, Midland and 30 operates in the morning at a level of service of F, and the P, P, PMs is at E, which are both very low level service. With the roundabouts at buildout, and we plan about a 10-year buildout, so in 3030, they'll be operating at a A and B in the morning, AM peak and a A and B in the evening, PM peak. The same with the Midland and Blue Jay today. In the morning, they operate anywhere between a C and a E, depending on which way you're coming from, and the evenings, between a C and a F, you know, mainly that northbound is is the F. With the roundabouts at full buildout and all the projected growth, you know, through the county over the next 10 years, they're gonna be operating at a A and B in the AM and a A, B and C in the PM, again, depending on the approach to those intersections. So we feel like that helps, you know, address and help mitigate some the the existing traffic patterns. You know, drainage was another big concern, which actually was one of my biggest concerns when I first started looking at this property. I mean, generally, the first thing I do is I look at flood zones, I look at wetlands, and I look at the light hour to see what the elevations are. And my first thought was, man, this thing's gonna be really tough to drain, you know, it's, it doesn't have a good outfall. It drains, it's the headwaters, it's the St. Augustine Creek, and drains back underneath Midland Road. As the staff recommendation is, one of the first things we would have to do, 'cause it's located in a A undetermined flood zone, is we would have to perform a flood study and establish a base flood elevation out there. And once that is done, you know, we cannot increase the base flood elevation. The county's flood protection ordinance and FEMA regulate this very heavily, and we're not, I mean, we cannot increase the base flood elevation. So we'll have to do extensive stormwater studies and analysis to make sure that once the elevation has been determined and FEMA has accepted and adopted the new maps, that we don't do anything to increase that elevation. You know, some of the positives that come out of these types of studies are, you know, now you've got a a flood zone with a base flood determined elevation. So folks that that live in A undetermined areas pay higher insurance rates for their flood insurance, because they know it floods, but they're just not sure how high it floods. But once we establish that elevation, and then their houses are above that elevation, then, you know, they'll be afforded the, you know, the discounted rate that everybody else enjoys that that live in a determined area. And two, with with the studies, if things come up that we encounter when we do our downstream and upstream analysis, that there are improvements that can be done, that we could be a party to, we'd be glad to be an active participant. If there's stuff in the county right away, cleaning ditches, culvert work, things of that nature, we'd happy to party with the county in doing those things. Obviously, we can't go onto private property and start doing a bunch of improvements, but certainly anywhere the county has drainage easements or rights away that we can help contribute to, we would be glad to do that. Utilities was another point of concern, we had met with county staff three times prior to this meeting to talk about, you know, access and utilities and things of that nature. So right now, the, if this project is, the use is approved and we are able to move forward through the next steps, if we were gonna serve this with water, you know, there's a 16-inch water main in Highway 30 and one in Collichamley. We would extend at our own call strike, the water from 30 up to the project, through the project, and back out through this emergency access route and loop it back into the Collichamley system, providing a loop that would help bolster the overall system in that area. And then, far as the sewer's concerned, the county is currently studying the sewer system in that area. Alliance Engineering is is conducting that study, and we'll coordinate with them and determine the best location to connect, should the project get approved. And then, if there's any improvements necessary for our capacity, you know, we'll be a party to that and and pay for all those improvements. And if it requires, you know, downstream improvements to lift stations or whatever it may be, I mean, that's a part of of what these folks would be required to do. You know, another point of concern that had brought up was, you know, the school systems, it's the main reason everybody wants to to move to Effingham County, or a good reason, you have excellent school systems here, you have plenty of coworkers that live out here and moved out here specifically for that reason. And we had a neighborhood meeting last week, and actually, the the superintendent actually had attended, and indicated that, you know, they've been working the past five years to plan for growth that they knew were coming. He had indicated that they've got, you know, new growth, new projects coming out of the ground and expansions going on. I think with the Hyundai plant coming, I think everybody knew, saw the writing on the wall, and, you know, he said they have been very proactive in following, you know, planning, zoning board commissions and understanding the projects coming along and and planning for for this growth. And really, the last thing that I was gonna touch on is density, you know, it it looks like a lot, it's 550 units where nothing ever existed before, but just wetlands and and pine trees. And, you know, as Ms. Concanon had pointed out, when you look at the overall density, it's less than two units per acre, which is a kind of a rule density, but we are very clustered density on the uplands. You know, most of our lots are ranged between 65 and 50-foot wide with a depth of 142 feet. And then we got approximately 140 townhomes, but they're all clustered. We tried to put most of the the smaller area density to the front and the larger in the back. And then we're providing, you know, the the open space, pocket parks, planning for a pool and a pavilion, activity fields, you know, things of that nature. And again, this is just the the first step in a in a long process. That concept plan was just to give the folks an idea of how it could potentially be developed, but as we move forward the process and hear the concerns, the next step, if this is, use is allowed, is to come back with that plan and address those concerns and meet all the development standards of the county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor?
Evening, folks, my name is Bryant Ligon, and I'm the developer for the proposed project. Thank you, Travis, I feel like you did a really good job covering a lot of the bases, but I do want to just make a couple comments and observations. And the way that I see it, planning board recommended denial for really three reasons. Single access point, which Travis talked about, traffic, which Travis talked about, discussed, and felt it gave a great solution. And then, third is the surrounding areas, so the density in the townhomes, or the surrounding area don't match the surrounding area. And one thing I want to say to that is I took the time to 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 see what the projects within a one-mile radius were. I counted, I stopped counting at nine, that all have relatively similar density, right around a quarter-acre lots and even includes some townhomes. And I believe the precedent's been set for townhomes in this area with, I think there's a recent project that was approved that on on 30 that was a was a PD. In addition to that, there's another one in Creekside that that is within a mile radius that is townhome. So, that said, I do think that there there is, as as the county mentioned earlier, this is an area or corridor for, they believe, basically a growth corridor. And and so I think what we're trying to do with this project is, is, right now, there's a problem. And that problem is people who choose, who want to move here, the teachers, the the workforce, you know, the the first responders, county workers, people who work here and can't, and and want to live here, they can't afford to live here. And so, we want to be able to provide them with with attainable housing, and so I think that's what this project does.
Please refrain from your comments of those nature in the audience.
The the other thing I I want to touch on is, we hosted a community meeting. It's obvious that that there, there's a lot of people that that don't wish this project to move forward. And so we wanted to understand some of those concerns, see where we could help out, if there's anything we could do. And Travis did mention, one of the things that we want to take a look at is how can we help drainage that would help, help the community out? The other two comments that were made were, and Travis mentioned this, were were flooding and drainage and then the schools. And Mr., the superintendent for Effingham County was present, and Nancy Ford, and we asked him to speak. And and he felt, like Travis said, that they've done a really good job of keeping up with the growth and growth. In fact, he he had mentioned that they purchased recently 80 acres on Blue Jay Road in preparation for the growth. Guys, in closing, I I I wanna harp on this, I wanna give everybody a chance to speak, I know they're anxious to do so. But in closing, we feel like every objection has a reasonable and staff-supported solution. You know, we hope to make this a great project and a great win for for both the county and and the community. Thank you, guys.
All right, appreciate that. We had about 20 minutes, I timed it for the proposal side, so I'm gonna make sure we get at least 20 minutes on the other side to be able to hear. Hang on a second, I'm I'm gonna recommend, since there's a lot of people here, if you're here for this particular, raise your hand so I can see. That's what I thought, so we wouldn't have time to let everyone speak tonight, so I want to encourage you to find three or four that you would like to speak that understands your concerns, and if you have time, we'll listen to a couple more, but so if.
Wesley, I'm a property owner, and it backs up to my property, I would like to be able to speak.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna give at least 20 minutes tonight to speak to it, I just know we can't hear from 80 people. So I want the constituents to agree on who's gonna speak. So if if y'all good with this, gentlemen, come and speak and give your name to the clerk for the record. You, you wanna speak secondly? Okay.
First of all, I don't want to offend any of your commissioners or the developers, they gotta do what they gotta do. The whole thing.
What's your name?
Marty Sekerser. The whole thing is that God-forgiving Georgia ports authority that Nathan Deal loves and the holiday plant, that's what this is all about. They see an opportunity to come in here and make big money, but I'm gonna tell you, my parlor told me, it's called three-man swamp. Three people went in it, three of them didn't come back, it's a swamp. They gonna build five detention and ponds to drain it, you can't drain it, there's no way. And if you go further, Belmont Glen, whatever it is, they got detention upon, they done cut a ditch for the detention pond, draining it into the swamp, my nephew told me that. I just, there's no way, I don't want them in my backyard, and I'm just telling you like it is, they can go somewhere else, I don't want them. I mean, it, plain and simple.
Thank you, Marty. Yeah, choose your, make sure it's specific and you got your information together, 'cause we're gonna.
I'm Wade McDonald, I am one of the, a part-owner of TNT9 GLLC. I own it along with my in-laws, Tommy and Terry Strickland, Tommy's unable to attend tonight, he's got stage four cancer.
Why didn't he speak on the pros?
I tried to, I raised my hand and he stopped me.
Yeah, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give you a couple minutes, if it's gonna be different.
That's fine, that's all it'll take.
Hang on a second, it needs to be a little different from what they share, but go ahead.
It will be.
Okay.
Okay. I don't typically come to these zoning meetings because I believe in private property rights. If it is legally permissible and conforms to zoning, I'm not gonna object to what my neighbors do on what they own. It seems that our county has a good problem. It seems that our county has a good problem. People want to live here. Most of us have children and they're, these children have children. And if we're fortunate, they don't move away too far. I have two adult children. Both of them have been trying to purchase a house in Effingham County. My daughter was successful in January. My son and his wife have been trying since the fall. They've put five to 10 full-price offers on houses and still haven't been successful. This parcel is about as far south as you can get in Effingham County. It's only about four and a half miles from Benton Boulevard, Highway 30 Circle, and about six and a half miles from I-95. I live north of 119 and across from my neighbor's house is a subdivision. When that subdivision began to develop, my neighbors, oh, we need to come to a zoning meeting. And I said, why? They said, we don't know what kind of people are going to live here. And I responded, regular people. They'll get up and they'll go to work. They'll go to churches. They'll take their kids to the ballpark. And they'll do it day after day, just like I have 40 years at the same occupation. Things are going to happen in our county and something's going to happen on this parcel eventually. Change is inevitable. I can remember when the only thing in Rankin, Georgia was a chicken delight they eat. If I remember right, it closed at 6:00 P.M. Do I hope that something happens during my fallen law's lifetime? Yes, I'd love for that to happen. The 9G of the TNT LLC is for nine grandkids. Four of those grandkids are currently in college. One has already graduated with a master's and there's one that'll be entering into college this coming year. I expect that they'll have kids. And if we're lucky, they'll want to live close to home. Commissioners, from a business standpoint, the current property revenue off this is less than $5,000 a year. When it's built out, it could be three-quarters of a million or a million dollars annually and provide a whole lot of infrastructure for this county. I attended tonight because basically I wanted to say that I have rights to, I'm a constituent. And if it is legally permissible and it conforms to zoning, I'd urge you to approve it. It's also heartbreaking to me to think that we all move somewhere and then we want it to stop. And then, we don't want neighbors. It's not very neighborly.
No comments from the side?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank goodness.
No comments like that or I'll have to ask you to leave the premise.
I'll be quiet.
We're going to keep it very civil. Listen, folks, we live in Effingham County. We can agree to disagree. You've got a board up here that loves this county. We don't serve because we get some huge stipend for this. Takes a lot of time. And he's a property owner, that's why I allowed him to have his say. It's his grandkids that are involved. He needed to have a say. These are developers. I appreciate what you had to say, but I listen more to my property owner constituents like we want to hear now. So, those who are in opposition, we're going to give you equal time to share your concerns and we're going to evaluate those concerns with what we understand in our knowledge of the county and having lived here 45 years and some of them all their life. Okay?
Yes, sir. My name's John Boston. I live near this development. He was talking about at the build-out. This is a caveat to what he was saying. We talked to the builders the other night. We asked them what the prices of the homes would be. He said there may be a million-dollar home in there. They told us around $320,000. Lots in there, 50 by 142s, a certain percentage of them. With your stipulations, that's seven and a half feet off each property. So, you've got a 35-foot shotgun. If they build it 100 feet long, they could probably get a lot of money for it. But when they were talking with the zoning, your own zoning application, there's six questions on the back. One is describe uses of other properties in the vicinity and the property you wish to rezone. Well, everything around this is single-family homes, no townhomes as of now. There's already been two developments approved near this. So, we're talking about traffic. Well, the other two have been approved. This one hadn't been approved, one on Highway 30 and one on Hodgeville. Okay? So, maybe we should wait and see what the impact of all those houses are before we do three big developments and, you know, all heck breaks loose. You understand what I'm saying? And the question number five on there says, describe how your rezoning proposal will allow us use that is, will allow us a use that is suitable in view of the uses and development of adjacent and nearby properties. Adjacent properties are not highly densified. Okay? It also causes a traffic burden on adjacent properties. The road, they're talking about a roundabout. I know some people are proponents of roundabouts. They think that's the fix-all of everything, but we've all been through them, we know they don't really work. And they're going to put one here.
We don't all know they don't work. We have seen roundabouts work. We've got, just, you know, we've got like 10 more that we're going to be building that's going to help the traffic flow with the Parkway and also...
Yes, sir.
We do believe they work.
Yeah, the Parkway runs into a traffic circle. We'll see how that works.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I travel through one every day. Unfortunately, there's not enough, not enough high-paying jobs in Effingham County right now to sustain all the people that's here. So, some of us poor people have to drive into Savannah, unfortunately, commute in the morning and commute back. And I've heard everything from people, you know, just get up a little bit earlier if you don't like the traffic, because they can't do anything because it's only a three or four-hour traffic in the morning, traffic in the afternoon. And I'll finish it. I've got many things to say, but I just want to put my point.
But I share your traffic concerns. I mean, we see that. That's why we are doing some particular things for the traffic.
Yes, sir. And there was one...
We see that.
Yes, sir. There was one proposal tonight that was tabled further down Highway 30 for 200 and something townhomes. So, that's more traffic down Highway 30. And then, a development on 30, a development on Midland, a development on Hodgeville, they all dump into Highway 30. And the great Effingham Parkway that starts on a S-curve and ends in a roundabout that they can't go into Effingham County, I mean, into Chatham County through Benton Boulevard because trucks or the truck traffic is not allowed to go through there. They have to go back to 21.
That's being worked on, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's all I can say about that.
Yeah, they've already built a bunch of schools and all there, so I think they may have nixed that.
That's being worked on.
Anyway, all right. Well, you're getting the gist of what I'm saying, but thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I'll let someone else have their say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ronald Graber. I live just off of Courthouse Road. I have a few questions, actually. Do developers pay any kind of an impact fee for a project of this scope? When I look at the size of this project, over 500 units, that can equal, be equal to approximately 150,000 gallons of water needed per day, 150,000 gallons of wastewater generated per day. Will the developer be responsible for paying any kind of upgrades to the water or wastewater system if the project is approved? The gentleman stated that a...
Do you want to answer that question first?
Sure, appreciate that.
Yeah, every development, there's an impact or we call it a cost recovery fee. Our system has a certain cost to it. So, say a $20 million system can handle 1,000 ERUs and each resident has a certain amount of ERUs. We divide that to calculate how much of the capacity of our system do you need to pay for so that you're not using it without paying for it? That allows us to replace that system when it's at full capacity. And that includes the lines and everything. So, yes, there is a cost recovery for the water, cost recovery for the sewer, and they have to build the roads themselves, of course, inside their facility to our standards so we can take those. So, we try to limit any cost. And actually, because it does create, I'm not saying on four against this, I'm just telling you to answer your question. We have capacity and if that capacity's not used, then we are paying for it from the constituents who use it. And for a long time, our system only had like 30% to 40% use of our system. With the growth, we are finally able to use our entire system, so we're going to have to eventually expand it. So, it does actually create revenues for paying for our system. So, yes, they do pay a cost recovery and they do increase revenues. It makes our systems profitable or should I say not costing anything.
Would the county manager at a later date, of course, be able to provide some of those specific numbers for the residents? Great.
There's a cost recovery for water, sewer and various items.
Yeah, absolutely. We can give the formula.
I'd also like to say, to address the gentleman in the red chuggered shirt, I have no problem with people selling their property. It's their property, they have a right to do, to do what they want with it. I do have an issue, however, when projects are approved that adversely affect the existing residents near the property and cause then exist, increased costs. Our county sales tax recently went up from 7% to 8% to pay for some of the development costs that have already occurred. As I said, I live right off Courthouse Road. Right now, all the development on McCall Road and Courthouse area, it can take you 20 minutes to get from Courthouse Road to Route 21, a distance of 150 yards. And the gentleman did say that they hired a traffic engineer. Will a full-blown traffic study be required before a final decision is made on a project of this size?
Should there be something? I don't know exactly what. Make a stipulation that you want to address it?
They will, and I know they've already hired, had a preliminary, I forget the acronym, I'm sorry, analysis done, traffic analysis done, but to determine what improvements are going to be needed on McCall with regards to XL, DCL lanes or turn lanes, yes, that would...
Midland?
A Midland, I'm sorry. Midland, yes, it would be required.
Okay. And this, a follow-up hearing will be held on this project before the final decision is made. Is that correct?
A what?
A follow-up hearing, will a follow-up hearing be held on this project?
There'll be a brief follow-up hearing so that our other commissioners can speak to what they're going to hear from you guys tonight and then from...
And will those traffic, do you know if the traffic studies will be also available at that time?
I'm not saying if the board's going to approve. If the board approves it, what the manager's telling you, they will have to have a traffic study. We, as a board, would not want to increase the traffic issues. They have to convince us through the traffic study, through the DCL, XL, turn lanes and so forth and the things we know that we're doing already that it would not impact negatively the current transportation.
So, ultimately, the cost of those improvements will be borne on us, the existing residents and not on the developer?
No, sir. If they have to approve DCL, XL lanes, they'll build those.
Okay, thank you.
Just like at Colichamley, there was a subdivision that's going up in that area.
That's right.
And they're building the roundabout because we required that. So...
A portion of, yeah, a portion of.
A portion of, yeah.
Thank you. I'll let other people say.
Okay. All right. So...
All right. Good evening. My name is Peter Lankhorst. I live in Hunter's Mills subdivision, right adjacent to this. Part of his water statement that he said, yeah, the floodwater is pretty bad down there. It hasn't been, not too many years ago. I've been there 27 years and just several years ago, when after they put Belmont Glen in, our whole subdivision flooded. There was four feet of water in our subdivision because of that whole wetland area. It's terrible, right? I don't mind expansion, right? The gentleman has, has an area zoned for timber, right, or agriculture. He cut all the timber off, right? I'm sure we're going to have water problems now that all that timber is gone. It's agriculture. Put more trees in, right? Have no problem with that. But the schools, they're overloaded right now. Traffic, I can't get out of my subdivision. I have to wait three or four minutes sometimes at my stop sign waiting for a gap to come. It's tough. There's just a lot of traffic down there. Schools are packed. Our subdivision got flooded out because of that, of that area. And I just, I think the zoning commission was correct by denying this out first, and I think that's the right choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you speaking for or against?
I am speaking against. My name is David Nutter and is in November, U-T-T-E-R. I think we all fully understand the frustrations of not being able to develop your property completely as you wish. But in this instance, traffic is my immediate concern and to put it realistically, the 550 houses will, everyone has a car, some have two. So, imagine 1,100 vehicles driving past your driveway at least twice a day. I too live in, adjacent to this development. Midland Road is a two-lane county road. It doesn't have the capacity for such increased traffic. Those are short-term concerns. Longer-term concerns voiced here tonight, which are the same with many here, are infrastructure. This is in the Guyton community and to add 2,200 people to their sewer system would strain that already strained system. Will we, can we add 1,000 people to Effingham High Schools?
Let me correct one thing. It wouldn't go to the Guyton system.
Wouldn't go into the Guyton system.
This is the Effingham County system.
We need to, have we planned for school expansions, hospital expansions, more fire trucks, more police cars? Impact fees will cover some of that cost, but the rest will be, will be covered by other property owners who live here now. So, I took note of the chairman's comment at the beginning of our meeting tonight that Effingham is perhaps one of the best places in the country to live, and that is apropos to this discussion. And if we wanted to live in a high-traffic, high-dense area, we would have moved to Poole. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Edward Cook and I just want to make, get a clarification. It was mentioned earlier by the developers that based on the size of this subdivision, that the density would be about two houses per acre. Now, are they considering that the entire 288 acres or are they just considering the actual acreage is going to be usable for building the residence?
No, you're correct. They're considering, and we're aware of that. We're aware of how dense it is on one acre. There may be five homes on one acre.
And I think that's the point, Mr. Chairman, is that the density of this is, to me, the major concern. Now, certainly, the county needs to grow, revenue needs to increase, but the density in this one place that has been rural for many, many years and long-term residents here who own property from their grandfathers and their great-grandfathers are now being faced with a high-density housing development, with other high-density housing developments in the immediate area. And there's a lot of concern about that. You know, change is coming, I have no question about that, but we do want to look at density. If there's some way of reducing that density, it would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Still got about eight minutes if some others would like to speak in opposition to be fair to both sides. Okay?
My name is Darrell Blazing. I live off of Midland on Myrtle Wood. I hear that maybe the infrastructure's going to be increased for that development. I have five pounds of water pressure measured by one of your agents at my house just this last year. What's that going to do when they draw all the water in the larger line and reduce my water pressure? I'm not on the county sewer, but I'm on the county water. Problem, the 1,100 cars that are going to go up and down Midland, it's a dark, small road. It's a rural road. It can't handle that kind. The roundabouts might take the traffic away from the cross streets, but the traffic going up and down the street is going to be ridiculous. And I don't deny a gentleman's family trying to profit from the sale of land. That's great. But I'm going to ask, are any of those people selling the land going to live in this subdivision? Or are they going to leave the problem for the rest of us and take off with the money? That's all I have to say.
One thing I, please hold your applause. One thing I want to address, because I'm concerned about what you just said about is water pressure. Has our booster station gone online yet?
That, it should have went online last week with the testing. And just so the folks know, we are well aware that we've had problems with water pressure, particularly on the areas that are farther from the intake where Midland is and Highway 30. So we've just completed the construction of the booster station that will increase pressure. So if you're not feeling it now, you should feel it within the next couple of weeks. They're going to try and ease it in because it does, it does provide a substantial increase.
Yeah, you don't want to blow anybody's files. We've got to do it slowly, make sure it's going. So I would love for you, aside from this issue, to let us know if you have better pressure in about 30 to 45 days. Plus, later on, we're looping the water line, which helps a little bit, definitely water quality. But one of the things I committed to when I came on as the chairman is I was going to make sure we looped our lines. They were not looped, which creates better pressure and it creates better water quality. And we got the booster station. And we're also modeling to see about where we need to put a water tower, which gives us extra storage and extra pressure. But I think the booster's going to handle, I hope, 90% of our pressure issues in that area. Because we've got 36-inch lines, we've got plenty of water, that's not the issue, it's the pressure. And I believe we've resolved that. That's why I knew it was coming on pretty soon. So let us know how that goes for you. I'd like to make sure you're not, you're up from that five pounds to whatever it's supposed to be, 200 or whatever it's supposed to be.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Bowers. I live on Zipper Row, right off of Midland. My concern is the traffic is a big concern. And when this subdivision gets put in, you're not going to do anything to penalize us who are already using the road by putting in a caution light or a stoplight or something for that one neighborhood that has one entrance and one exit onto Midland Road, because the traffic backs up past that entrance that they're doing all the time. And those keep people can't get out, one way in and one way out. So I'm asking the county to nod, to say that the county's not going to come in for this one subdivision and delete or slow down traffic so that one entrance, one exit, big subdivision, can hit Midland Road. That's the only thing I'm really concerned about, that y'all don't do something to hurt all the other people who are living there for one subdivision at that intersection.
No, I think we all agree, and I particularly agree with the idea that we're going to have to, once you're not saying whether they're going to approve or not approve, but I want to make sure that we have the traffic studies and we have the information we need to know that we're not hurting our traffic issues.
More traffic study, not theirs, because who pays, gives the answer they want. Our county needs to do that traffic study so we get the answer. We're looking for it.
Noted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I can say, we actually have the, we did our own data analysis when we did our, it's only about a year old, a year and a half old, on both the intersection of Highway 30 and Midland. That's what was the basis for the recommendation for the roundabout and also at Blue Jay. So we are not relying on someone else's number. I just want to assure you of that.
In that modeling, we can go back and ask them to look at the, which is independent, is that, what's the company?
Pond.
Pond, yeah. We can ask them to go back and plug in this subdivision entry and give us some data on that. That might be good to have before the next time we get together.
Okay.
Good comment. All right, we got a couple more minutes, some of us in opposition.
Hi, I'm Carol Nutter, better half of David Nutter. We bought a house, bought a house in Hunter's Mills. We come from some crazy metropolitan areas. I want to live in a quiet place. I don't care what people say, I want to live in a quiet place. I wake up every morning, and my backyard is adjacent to Midland, and I hear traffic through the morning and I hear traffic through the night. If you're going to put a roundabout with this development, heck, why don't you just do that now? Because we see a lot of accidents out there. That is a deadly, deadly intersection. So I propose that we try to do that, too, and...
You're talking about Midland and 30?
Yeah.
See, the only...
And Collichamley.
Yeah, the only slowdown there is we have to work with the state, it's a state highway. We would have done it yesterday if we could have done it by ourselves, but we have to work in cooperation with the state. And finally, we got them to look at, example, Hodgeville and 30, they saw what we've been saying about, and they're going to put a traffic light in the meantime until they can get, in a turn lane, until they can get our roundabout built.
We need to do something.
Until they get a roundabout built.
And that's Chatham County, and that's Chatham County, but yeah.
And Chatham County, too. So we have other governments we have to work with, the state and Chatham and so forth. But we did it yesterday if we had just the full authority to do it. But we are getting them done, Collichamley, Midland, and...
Good. Thank you for that.
And Hodgeville. Now, Hodgeville's going to be huge. We met with the DOT this past January, and they announced that they understand what we've been trying to scream about, and they, like I say, a traffic light's going to help a lot just for right now, until they can get the roundabout designed and built for us.
Yes, I agree with that. We're at some point going to have to put a new septic system out there. If this passes, why can't we all join in with that septic system? Because I'm going to have to pay a lot of money to put it, some of our neighbors are already doing that because we were in an older development.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think it, I think it'd be great to look at, if there's some kind of grandfather we could do to help the constituents out there to not have to put in a $10,000 septic system if they could tie in for less cost to our system and never have to put bugs in the sewer system anymore and not have to pump it anymore, it'd be great, yeah.
Yes, it would, and...
Different issue, but I think we need to look at that, if there's something we could do for our constituents to give them at one time. We've done that with other places I've worked with, I did some consulting. If you come by subdivision, they got 200 homes, they had septic issues because they've been there 30 years or 20 years or whatever, then you say, all right, if you tie in between now and here, this will be your cost. So I'd like for our staff to look at that, but now if you wait longer than that, because if we can do it as one contract, it's obviously less expensive for us to help make those tie-ins. So, yeah, I think we ought to look at that, it'd be great.
And the, and the water system as well. I mean, our aquifer is only going to last so long because we have a community well. So I'm concerned, I don't know where they're going to get their water from, but if they're going into the ground to get their water, they're going to be taking some of our water. It depends on where it is.
They'll be getting their water from surface water. It'll be from Savannah I D plant where we get our water for the south end of the county.
So that won't affect us?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't agree with the state on this aquifer depletion, but that's their position, and so saltwater intrusion, so we cannot dig any more wells in the aquifer in Route 119. So they'll be using surface water, so it will not affect your aquifer.
Okay.
And I think your aquifer's probably safe anyway, but that's just my opinion.
Well, thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Yes, sir, I have one quick thing here, just a question.
And then we're going to close the public...
Okay, that's fine. These gentlemen, the other night, we had a meeting with them, and they told us that staff recommended that Midland Road was a good developmental corridor that they suggested. True, false, this is what these gentlemen told us, that the county staff told them that Midland Road was a great corridor that they want to get more development on.
Well, staff may have have said that, I don't know.
All I'm saying is, if they're doing this, well, Midland Road's a long road and...
Yeah, we're redoing our comp plan now.
Yes, sir.
And one thing they look at is, where do we have water and sewer capacity? You've got this big 36-inch line with 16-inch lines. Does it make sense to run them north five miles at $20 million? Or is it better to have development around where you already have the capacity in the lines? So a lot of our comp plan is going to be changing because, what's the commission, Coastal Regional Commission that helped us, they didn't really do, in our opinion, a good job. So we immediately have decided to redo it. We've been taking public comments, many of you have made comments, we appreciate that on our comp plan. So we're reworking that to see where our development will be in the future. So if they made that comment, it's probably because of the access to utilities and facilities.
If we just had access to roads as good as we had access to utilities.
I agree, and we are working on that. So we'll...
And that's correct, just so, just so you know. That, the growth corridor pretty much is determined by water and sewer availability at this point for density growth. Anything beyond that, if there's not water and sewer, we're obviously not recommending density.
And we recognize there's a balance tonight, that we appreciate everybody's comments on both sides. There's a balance between the 350 jobs that are coming to Effingham that will be high in paid jobs from the, say, one plant that's coming here, and the satellites that have come off of that could be another good hundred, high-paying jobs that allows, like my kids who had to move to South Carolina and move to Atlanta, could have been here if they had those jobs 20, 30 years ago. So there's just going to be a housing need. So the balance is going to be listening to your comments tonight, looking where we have utilities, looking how to protect both the rights of a property owner and protect the rights of those who live near, so we have the right transition. So we've got a lot of balancing, so keep us in your prayers as we analyze and hear everything that. One more comment, we're going to have to move on.
And I'll be quick. I will be quick. My name is Kathleen Stiles, and I live on Midland Road. I live at the intersection of Midland and Courthouse, right in front of the rumble strips. I hear them in my sleep. I know what the traffic is like there, and that is miles down the road from the area that we're talking about. I cannot back out of my driveway. It is unsafe for me to do that. I have to turn around in my husband's nice grass to get out of my driveway. I cannot imagine what it is going to be like when this development, if and when it becomes a real thing. I just want you to know that, that it's not just this one section of Midland that is going to be impacted. It is going to be up and down that entire street, the people that are on that main street, and all of the smaller streets that go down there. The second thing that I'd like to talk about is, and I did not hear it mentioned tonight, that the townhouses, will they be owned by the residents or will they be leases? And my question to that, a subsequent question is, if those are leases, are those residents paying school taxes and are they paying property taxes? My husband and I are retired. We pay taxes. We are happy to pay taxes. They come, they clean the streets, I mean, everything that Effingham County, my taxes help support. Is this group that is going to be living in this area, will they be paying their share of taxes?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they will. Now, the renters pay it through their lease, okay? Because the property owner, is it, first of all, is it, I'd like to know, is it going to be leased or owned?
It's going to be sold, not leased.
Okay. The plan is to be sold, because that's no guarantees, just because they say that's going to be sold, but that's the plan, that's that first question yet. But if it is leased, the property owner still has to pay the taxes on it. So they have to get that back from the lease, from the rentor, the leasor, leasing, I should say. So if the property taxes are $1,000 a year for a unit, they've got to get roughly $80 or $9 a month in their rent to pay that taxes. So the leasing is paying for the taxes.
And actually, probably more because they're not eligible for homestead, right?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, they won't get the homestead. There's going to be some exemptions they will not get, but bottom line is residential properties do not pay for the services that we all enjoy. And that's why one of our issues that I've been working with the commission, and they all understand it, we're trying to get the balance, and there's been, you know, obviously some dispute about the warehousing. But what people don't realize, some of the warehousing that we have is going to generate around $7 to $9 million in the future. They have very little need for services, which means we can use that, and we've already talked about it in workshops, committing a portion of that to rolling back taxes to our property owners. And in addition, that helps pay for share for EMS and services.
Exactly.
And then the commercial's important because that's where we get our sales tax from, which helps pay for a lot of our roads and streets and so forth, the 1%, you know, T-Spot, everybody. So it's a balance to make sure we have the right amount of residential, to have, to get the restaurants everybody wants, and to get the commercial we want, but don't get too much residential because then all the service cost for the schools is on the residents. So if we can get the commercial and the industrial as a balance, that's what we're working on. If you looked at our digest, you'll see the industrial had been pretty flat, but we finally have got it going up. And that, and all our constituents are going to feel a real relief in the next five years in rollback and improved services because they're going to help fund that, because they don't get rollbacks, they don't get home state exemptions and so forth, so...
And I understand what you're saying, but are we going to see it soon?
I really think you are.
As my property taxes go up, you're saying eventually they'll come down when all of this works?
Well, no, I hope your property taxes, if you've lived here a while...
Yes.
Your property taxes should not have gone up, because we... You can laugh, but I got the facts, I can tell it to you right now if you listen. Last year, this board rolled back, so if you bought a new house, okay, then your property tax is going to be high because it's new.
My house is 20 years old now.
So you've already lived there. So it's reassessed every year. We rolled back, and we have to do it as a group, because we can't see what each individual of 1,000 homes are assessed at, but we rolled back our prop, our tax village that we assess, that we control. We don't control the school, the IDAs, or, but we control the county commission village. We rolled it back to equal what the assessment was for the law, so that on the average, there should have been no increase to our surface, general fund service fund from property owners who've been here 20 years.
Okay.
Now, I can't say that somebody didn't go up a little bit, somebody's went down to get that average, but we rolled it back, and we're committed to rolling that back every year through the growth that we have, so that the new buildings is the ones we get the new taxes on and not people like you and I, I've lived here 40-some years. And so, you know, I hope I can keep my tax and your tax where has very little increase. But in addition to that, we are hoping to roll it back like a whole mill from the warehousing that's coming.
Okay. So are you talking about the property taxes and the school taxes?
We don't control the school taxes, that's the school board. But if we, the warehousing should help them keep from increasing their taxes, and who knows, maybe they'll roll back as well. But I know this board discussed Sears' commitment to rolling back at least a mill, maybe more. We're going to have to see what the revenues are from the warehousing industry.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate everybody's comments. Now, we're going to close the public hearing.
I just got to speak. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I really do.
I'm going to give you one minute, then I'm going to cut you off.
I will not be long. My name is Cindy Zipper-Secondger. I know every one of y'all up here, every one of you gentlemen. Thank you for your good job, everything y'all have done for us. This is heartbreaking for me. I've had this land, I've been there for 31 years. My grandparents have been up here. They've had land for over 100 years. My dad had it for 50 years. Now, my nephew has it and myself. They're going to be in our yard. They're going to be in there. And not only that, you can see where Belmont, like they said, the water's already coming. My brother, my husband has to ditch us now for us. I understand, and I don't blame, you want to sell your property, Mr. Strickland and all that. Not 570 houses, maybe 100. We don't have, you can't not, have you ever walked back there? Come back there with me and see what it is really, all that back there, the wetlands and all. It's horrible. And, and it's going to be right up, and yes, I don't like what's going to be coming in there because I just feel, and I have to speak on behalf of my family for this, and thank you all for your time, but please think about this if you pass it.
Thank you very much. We're closing the public hearing, appreciate everybody's comments. When we come back, we will not take time to rehash everything that's said tonight. We'll probably have about 10 minutes for any additional information because these commissioners may have some questions, and they give you a chance to respond to their questions and thoughts. But I appreciate your attendance tonight. I'm going to ask for a motion to table this public hearing until, I'm thinking May 2nd. Just give Roger a chance to recuperate, and if he's not able to come, he should be able to attend by video. That's allowed when you're ill, and then Jamie will be back, and so let's do May 2nd, okay? So we're going to do May 2nd. These guys really need to speak into this, okay?
What will we find out when it comes up again?
That's what he's discussing.
May 2nd, yep. And that'll be during our regular, that will be, Stephanie, so these folks don't have to worry about it. Is that going to be during our regular business then, since it's a tabling?
It's supposed to be, yes.
Okay.
5 o'clock.
So when we come back, it'll be 5 o'clock. It may not be the first item on the agenda, but it'll be during the 5 to 6 business, okay? You won't need to be here at 6, be here at 5, and then you won't miss it. And we'll have a brief hearing so these guys can speak to it, okay? Thank everyone again for your time and your energy tonight. It's important to hear from everybody, appreciate you, thank you so much, okay? So I'm going to have a motion to table this to May 2nd.
So I move.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, 2nd, Mr. Loper, to table this public hearing to May 2nd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it is tabled till May 2nd. And that will table number 14, we'll move to number 15.
Want to give them a chance?
Yeah, I'm going to give you a chance, those who want to dismiss, so I won't have to speak over. May 2nd. May second. We have a lot of business left tonight, so if you are with the last item and you're planning to go ahead and dismiss, go ahead and do that, so we can continue on, that'd be
That's right.
very helpful for us.
Sure.
And the other constituents here are waiting to have their hearings. Thank you so much. So we're going to move to item number fifteen of the public hearing.
I'm not saying that makes a difference.
The planning board has recommended denying an application by TK Electric LLC. Request to rezon six point two acres located at seven sixty-three US Highway eighty from AR one to B three to allow for a commercial development map number three oh two, parcel number one oh five, and the Ms. Katie?
Hi. This is, uh, we have two applications here tonight, actually. We have a rezoning application, and there is a sketch plan as well, uh, for the same project. So this six acre tract, um, I'm going to go to the zoning layer here, is currently AR one, and the proposal is to rezone it to B three. The proposal is for two, uh, storage buildings for this, the owner of the property, that, that company is a contractor for the Hyundai plant. So their plan is to use two storage buildings for supplies that they will then use in their daily, um, activities over at the Hyundai plant. And that is proposed to be on, on the Dogwood side of the tract. Uh, this, at the planning board, there was a good deal of opposition to the original proposal, which involved an access onto Dogwood. Uh, following that meeting, the applicant submitted a new sketch, uh, a, a new exhibit, which is up on the screen now. And this eliminates the access to Dogwood. So there are still two storage buildings, they've reconfigured that a little bit. They would go through the wetlands area, um, creating an internal driveway, and then access only Highway eighty. The structure up at the front is proposed to be used for a restaurant. There's no particular details about that yet, but that is their thought, that the area is in need of more restaurants, and that would be a good use for that, um, Highway eighty frontage. But in the rear, that would be the storage buildings to be used for the electrical contractor, um, who we met with and, and who has, who is the applicant for this project. A traffic impact assessment and G dot encroachment permit will be required prior, prior to site development plan, um, approval. For B three, a thirty-foot vegetative buffer is required on all sides that are adjacent to residential. Go back to the zoning. This is the zoning. So as you see, it's, it's mostly low-density AR one and two in this general area. There are a few businesses, there's a daycare on the corner. Uh, Edwards Commercial Park is across Highway eighty, so as you know, that is more intensive development over there.
Is that the only B three that I see?
Uh, the light blue is B three.
I thought that was B one.
One over here.
OYCA is B three.
Yeah, that one's B one. And B three is the light blue, so there's another one down here.
Okay, so it's B three across the street.
Yeah, Edwards Commercial Park, this is B three. Yeah. Uh, so that's basically it, but as I said, the, at the planning board, the opposition really did seem to center around the access to, the proposed access on Dogwood. And so the applicant's engineer was, was at the, that meeting, and afterwards, they, um, submitted this revised concept plan, which shows that there will be no access on Dogwood. That they'll funnel all traffic, on, any truck traffic onto Highway eighty. And this would be, you know, just general, uh, service trucks. This is not, we're not talking about, you know, tractor trailers going in here, except for perhaps the initial deliveries. So this is really just a, a site that's convenient to the Hyundai plant, uh, and, um, with the added bonus that they promise as a restaurant in the future.
Do you have, uh, copies of this that we can look at?
Is that?
Run out of this right here, it's not in the, this one, this right here.
New layout.
It's up, it's, that's it. I don't, I don't have a physical.
We can email it out.
I see it.
Thank you.
I can see it right there.
It's currently a mobile home on site.
You got one?
Is that what I'm seeing?
Uh. Yeah, there's something down there.
Help me a lot, just knowing they're going out to eighty. Are you ready for the open of public hearing, you want to study a little bit more?
No, we can, I can hear, listen.
Okay. I'm going to open a public hearing, anyone tonight speaking in favor?
Good afternoon, I'm Elick Metzger with EMC Engineering, um, representing TK Electric. Like Ms. Teresa said, there was some opposition, mainly because of access was propos, proposed on the Dog, Dogwood way. So we re, redid the configuration, um, so all traffic would go out on the Highway eighty. We showed the buffer around the property, and also, I don't know if you can see it, but they're also willing to put up a fence
With residential sectioned?
Uh, basically around the whole, the whole tract. So, uh, they'll fence it and have the undisturbed buffer, or vegetative buffer, or whatever's needed to have, um, you know, a good screening from the adjacent properties.
They'll have to mitigate the wetlands for the road?
Yes. So that's, originally, that was, um, the reason we wanted to split the property to avoid any wetland mitigation. So, uh, now they're going to cross the wetlands, it's going to be in a, a, a pretty big cost to them to cross it. But, yes, sir. Uh, to pay for mitigation and to actually build it. So one thing I did want to point out, I think there was some misunderstanding at the previous meeting on what this building was actually used, going to be used for. So one up front is a restaurant. And in the back is an electrical business, so it's not a warehouse, it's not a trucking facility, it's not, you know, it, it operates on a, you know, normal working hours. So it has office space and a shop. They'll store switches, wire, conduit, they load their trucks, and they go out on service trucks to businesses to do electrical work, um, primarily at the Hyundai plant, um, to start with. So it's, it's not going to be forklifts and excavators and tractor trailers at three o'clock in the morning. It's, uh, normal working hours. It's a, an electrical business. So, uh, I think, um, with it being on Highway eighty, um, we'll have to have a G dot approved access. There's other, um, commercial properties in the near area. With us taking away the, uh, access on the Dogwood, that eliminates the conflicts with residential traffic. Adding the buffer and the fence, um, you know, separates that off, gives some, um, safety where, you know, people can't leave the site and go into the residential area. Residential kids and other people can't get onto the site, so, uh.
Sounds like you've done some good extra work, based on what constituents have said, so I appreciate it.
So, uh, with, with that, you know, we would, uh, ask that you rezone the property.
Is B, is a B three required for that type of business?
Well, certainly for the front, um, uh, for the restaurant in the front. And I would, I would venture to say, but based on the description that he's talking about, it fits the B three category.
Yeah, anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this request would be three.
Good evening, gentlemen. Sounds like y'all have had a long night.
Well, it's getting shorter.
I'm trying. My name is Melissa Allen, and I actually live, um, is the map up for? Can you put the map up from the neighborhood?
There you go.
It's up, it's up.
There it is.
Is it? Okay. I actually live in a small subdivision that's right there where, um, Sand Hill and ADR. So if you look, it makes one big neighborhood. You know, we are literally enclosed, you know, between Sand Hill, eighty, and Dogwood. We all consider ourselves, you know, a complete and total community. There is a daycare, there is a church. The other B three is actually a small motorcycle shop, that apparently that was family land, and he built him a shop on the backside of it. He's always got an open sign, but I don't ever see anybody there, so I don't know what's going on there. But needless to say, though, it's families, it's people, it's us. There is a very delineating line, being Highway eighty, between us and the warehouses that are across the street, the other B three zone stuff. I am all for us having, you know, um, being able to have mixed use, but I don't want a warehouse in my neighborhood. I have two business degrees, and I have twenty years of retail experience. And I can tell you now, that if somebody said, "I'm going to build a restaurant out there in Eden, Georgia", I'd say, "You're going to fail in six months. You're not going to get the business that you want." And so what do we do as a community, as the residents, when we have an empty building sitting on the front of this lot? Now we can't sell it to one of these new people that are going to be moving in, that are going to need housing, you know, for this plant. We don't want this here, because it's not what we think it should be. I just want to kind of, I went, I went through your, um, your comp plan, and there's, there's, when I moved here, I'm from Alabama, when I moved here, I had an opportunity to move to Bryan County, Chatham County, Effingham County. I chose Effingham. And the reason why I chose it is because it's country, it's southern. It's, we're not on top of one another. I'm not living like, you know, in the midst of a big, you know, um, industrial plant. And that's what I wanted. And I feel as if you're going against, you know, even what you say in your comp plan, because you even say, "For livability in Effingham County, you want an opportunity to promote strong sense of community, high quality of life, and small-town atmosphere." We may not be incorporated in Eden, but these people here, we all want to be able to live our lives, our residential lives, without having to stare at even a fence. You can't take the noise away. I don't know what they're going to be doing over there. I'm also concerned about the wetlands. I, growing up, I lived in a very water-rich area. I lived in the city where Interstate LED was. Interstate LED had to have a super fund, it contaminated the entire town. I had to have blood tests for the rest of my life to make sure.
Keep it related to this piece of property, okay?
Okay. But I'm just saying, though, that we, we, we know what homes have, we don't know what businesses have, and they keep saying this is an electrical company for an EV car factory, and we don't know what that is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition tonight?
Hi, my name is Kim Coyer. This is my sister Karen Bryant. We live at seven eighty-seven, which is right beside the property that's in question. Um, my dad built the house.
Can you show me theirs?
Um, is it this? Is it that one?
Yes.
That's yours.
Okay, yeah, the green dots where we're talking about?
This is where we're talking about.
Okay, yes, I'm right beside that. And the, um, adjacent property to that, it's, it's in two different names, but it's, well, it's both in my name, I don't know why.
So those two properties are yours?
Yes, uh-huh, but I'm right beside it.
Okay.
My dad and mom built the house that we live in now, back in the seventies when they moved there. It was all residential. My dad and I both fought against Edwards Industrial Park going across the street from us. And we lost after a matter of, uh, quite a few meetings trying. That place has only made it, to me, open a door for things like this to come in. We tried to say, "Please keep it residential", and it was not, they bulldozed a house into the pond, covered it up, and now we have trucks, and we hear the total beeping across the street from us twenty-four hours a day. My sister's bedroom is going to be beside the property line that we're talking about, where this warehouse is going to be, and a restaurant. I had the owner of that property, when I went over to introduce myself, thinking I was meeting a family coming in, and he told me then, "Oh, we'll be a little noisy." And I said, "Well, sir, my, my bedrooms are right here, and you can throw a softball and hit my house, I mean, it's just right there." Um, there's nothing I can do about it. I quit my job and moved in, and my dad died to take care of my sister. She does not deserve to have to hear this twenty-four hours a day. And they can say it's regular business hours, you put a restaurant in there, we don't know what's liable to happen. Once it's approved, they can make changes. As far as flooding, we don't know what's going to happen, because our area is very low there. We already have a problem with the backyard and the front yard, it looks like an ocean when it rains hard. Um, the other last thing is on Highway eighty, we can hardly get out of our driveway now as it is. We've got Pine Street, and then we've got Edwards, um, Industrial over there, where there are trucks going in and out. All of the eighteen-wheelers are avoiding I sixteen, so they don't have to go through the weigh station. So they're on Highway eighty. I don't know how we're going to get in and out of our property if we put a business right beside us. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to put a buffer, but how are we going to keep the noise from it? We've got trees there now.
Share with the board, yeah.
Excuse me, we've got trees there now, and it, it's not going to stop noise from a warehouse or a restaurant. We can't hardly keep a pizza place open in Eden.
You got you.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Did you want to say something?
Yes. I'm Lon Coyer, and, uh, you know, our driveway is right on eighty. I don't think anybody realizes how dangerous that whole area is. There are con, it sounds like New York City, there are constant ambulances going by. I've counted twenty-one semis.
Yes, sir, but you need to keep your comments related to how this will change that.
Well, if they, if they
How's it going, is, is that going to make it worse, that one piece of property? Is that your feeling?
I don't know. I assume it will. I don't really know what they're really doing there, because we've heard different stories, but it's, first of all, the property across the street, they said they weren't going to do all the things they've done, and the noise is so bad, you can't even talk in your own yard now. And, you know, I work nights, I'm a night person, so that doesn't help me any, but, uh, there will be like one tree, and they're, I, I assume they're going to tear all that stuff out of there, because that's what the guy said. And, uh, I don't know how big this building's going to be, but he made it sound expansive, you know?
Get some more information on it.
Pardon me?
Got to get some more information on it, but the noise is your biggest concern.
Well, it is a big concern.
Okay. Thank you.
And we don't want to have to look at it, you know? We had trees and all this, and same with the place across the street, they had trees, they just tore them down, and the noise just went through the roof.
Okay.
You know?
All right, thank you, sir. All right. All right, if we'll take one more, then we're going to close the public hearing on this item. You got something besides traffic and noise?
Good evening, Mr. Commissioners. Um, my name is Willie Wright, and I'm the chairman of the Dick and Board of Eden Missionary Baptist Church, located on four thirty-five Dogwood Way in Eden, Georgia. And I'm here to speak on the behalf of the pastor officers and members of Eden Baptist, Baptist Church, and our surrounding neighbors. And we are also in favor of the recommendation that the Effingham County Planning Board have recommended to you all, the commissioners, to deny, deny this request. And one reason why we would suggest we don't, Eden Missionary Baptist Church is not against improvements for Effingham County. But this application for rezoning for commercial is located right in the middle of a residential area. Now, if this would have been a residential area in an incorporated area, I don't think we would have no problem with it. But this recommendation is to be rezoned commercial is located right in the middle of a rural residential area with no infrastructure for sewage, uh, drainage, and anything in that nature. And looking at the map that the request is requesting, it has two holding ponds on it. And the reason why those two holding ponds are on it, because there's wetland running right in the middle of these six acres. And two holding ponds, one in the front and one partially in the middle of it there. And it's going to be surrounded by a burn. I lived in this area all of my life. The Old Geacher River, when it decides to flood, especially back in nineteen ninety-four, holding ponds don't have any control on the Geacher River. And where, being such, going to be a burn all the way around the area, where is the water going to go? You're located right in the middle of a residential area. What it's going to do is it's going to go in our homes, that's where it's going to go. You know, because the county
Let me address that for you real quickly, they have to get a Georgia Soil and Water Study right. Water can, their construction, these are the guidelines in the last several years, that's probably changed from back when you first moved to the property. Water cannot leave that property any faster than it does right now. The engineering and the Georgia Soil and Water have to certify that to this board, or they can't build it.
Well, I think living experience is better than any certification that you get, I lived there.
I'm not saying that you're not experiencing it now.
Yes.
But the water that's on that land, they cannot contribute to that issue.
So it cannot contribute to that issue.
It cannot get any worse.
It can't get any worse.
Can't.
Okay, if you say so, you're, you're, you're the professor on that, I'm not.
I'm just going by what the
But I'm just telling you what life experience
Yeah, okay.
have foreseen it. If you lived there in nineteen ninety-four, when we had the floods down there, and all, not only there, but all over the state of Georgia.
We had Effingham, I remember in nineteen ninety-four when Westwood Heights flooded, but that doesn't happen anymore. but that doesn't happen anymore because of infrastructure.
Okay, okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna stand here and debate with you. You know, but I'm also saying that we're in agreement with what your planning board has already recommended to you. Okay. Also, to move on, you know, not only, now, I don't know how you feel, but you live in a residential area, and you got a burn bill all around you. That's like a, a soul thorn that you got to look at every day when you pass by, and just feel how the residents that's living around that burn is gonna feel. You know, and that's my Commissioner right there, Forrest Floyd. And that's Sister Mary Jane Hamilton right there. She has a daycare that's located right next to there.
What's the zoning?
She already done had Forrest down there to look at the traffic problems that was on Highway, I'm not talking about now, but this has been a-
We understand the traffic problem. What's, what's the thing about a burn?
I don't know.
Is, is there gonna be a burn? Alec, you there?
I heard a fence.
I heard a fence, I didn't hear a burn.
I don't think that's in the ordinance as a burn requirement.
Let me address, because you've said several times there's gonna be a burn. Is there gonna be a burn?
No, what?
Give the microphone, address that for me if you would.
Excuse me. No, what's required is a, is a buffer. And, and so what, it's a thirty-foot buffer and a ten-foot buffer along Highway eighty. So within that buffer, we would, it would be undisturbed as much as possible.
It's not a burn.
And then it would be enhanced with plantings to provide additional buffer where it would, where it was thin or non-existent.
And then a fence?
And then a fence would be constructed around the entire property.
I just wanna make sure that there's not gonna be a burn, not gonna be a burn. It's gonna be a vegetated buffer, which means trees and whatever, cedars and flowers or whatever they do, shrubs. So there's not gonna be a burn.
That won't be a problem?
Won't be a burn.
And that, that's gonna beautify the neighborhood?
I'm just telling you it's not gonna be a burn. You said it was gonna be a burn, I'm telling you it's not gonna be a burn.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Now, just, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the traffic situation.
Well, we haven't heard the traffic, so we need to look for other reasons. Understand the traffic issue is one of the issues that constituents have.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I think I made my point on, I made our point on, you know, like I said, we don't have no problem with improvements. We all want that.
Right.
But this is in the middle of a residential.
And that's, I, I get it, I appreciate that. Main, main thing is, it's like it's the middle residential section, but you are concerned about the flooding, the traffic, and you don't want the burn, and it won't be a burn. Okay, thank you, sir.
What's your feelings about the daycare, Mr. Wright? That's a commercial zone property.
Say that again, Forrest?
What's the, what's your, what's your feelings about the daycare?
Now, you, okay, my feeling about the daycare is-
Was it this, is this, did you have the same feelings about that business?
Did I have the same feeling about that business?
Yes.
No, I did not have the same feeling because that's something that each neighborhood needs. We have working people that lives in the neighborhood. They need daycare.
Good point.
Right, good point. But also, Sister, Ms. Hamilton addressed you about the traffic problem there, going on Dogwood Way. Now you're gonna make another exit right there, close, right in the, in that area. So it's gonna double up the traffic problem there.
He has access to eighty already. They're saying now that they will not access Dogwood. That's what I'm understanding. There will be no access to Dogwood.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking, I'm talking about access to eighty. Now, you got where Dogwood, you got, don't get confused now. You got Dogwood Way and you got Dogwood. That's two different roads.
What road is this bordering? It says Dogwood Way.
Dogwood Way.
Yeah, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna come on to Dogwood Way.
I know that. That's the amended drawing what you have. The drawing that they submitted at the planning board office, the planning board meeting, it had access coming in. All their deliveries were gonna come in on Dogwood Way. But this is the amended drawing here, this is not the same drawing. This drawing here, go ahead, I don't wanna cut you off.
No, I was just saying, exactly, that's what we're saying. We can put, if they should approve it tonight, they can make that amendment, a stipulation that you will only access eighty. We can make sure they don't access Dogwood Way.
Yes, okay, we know that, but what I'm saying, where Dogwood goes out to Highway eighty, now you're gonna add another exit, another entrance that's gonna come into that si, that six-acre property just past the, the daycare on TK Electric property, you're gonna have another entrance there. You already got one problem with traffic getting in and out right there on Dogwood Road. Now you're gonna have a commercial exit here going in. And on top of that, that exit is gonna go into the storage buildings, and it's gonna go into a restaurant also that's supposedly in the, in the, um, in the, in TK Electric property. And so you got two entrances going in the eighty right there, close together, just like that.
What he's saying, he's got, we got one entrance from this property to eighty, but that's gonna, you got Dogwood goes into eighty, you got, uh, a new entrance going to eighty, and you got Dogwood Way on down comes into eighty.
No, that's not Dogwood Way, that's Dogwood.
Dogwood goes into eighty.
This property has access to eighty now. He's gonna utilize that same-
Same access.
-access to this property.
That's a residential, that's a residential exit. But you finna put a restaurant and a business in there. And so that's gonna have, you're gonna have three times, a triple amount of, of traffic that's gonna be going in and out of there. And it's gonna create a bottleneck right there.
I understand it's gonna increase traffic.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna increase traffic.
I think some of these things, y'all really need to ride out there and look at it yourself.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you.
We're gonna close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion among the board.
Well, we've determined that US eighty is a major truck and traffic route. And we've also just have al, already, um, there's already existing commercial property there. I could understand if there was an exit onto Dogwood Way. Um, but with this traffic in and out, I mean, I don't know how many trucks can operate out of an electric shop, but typical electric contractor, I would assume maybe eight to ten trucks. I mean, it's not like it's a, a twenty-four-hour warehouse. Um, I was against it going into Dogwood Way. I don't, I don't see this being as, uh, a negative as impact is what was proposed. Um, but I'm, I'm game to listen to, to y'all's guys' opinions.
I don't see where it'd have any effect on it, really.
Highway eighty is gonna become a major, I mean, it's, it already is the main corridor out of F and M County. And it's gonna become a commercial-
Excuse me, sir.
-corridor in time.
Public hearing's closed.
Um, anyway. Anybody else, what's your input?
You know, when it was on Dogwood, that's when I started, started this out. I was reading it, I wasn't for putting it emptying out of a residential area. Um, but I see the commercial across the street, and I hear the comments that that was something they didn't want either, but it is there. And we know, just like our constituents in, in the Rankin area on twenty-one and Springfield on twenty-one, we have residents who have built homes out there on ten, twenty-acre lots, and suddenly they've got, twenty-one's a commercial corridor, and, and that's what I can't get around. Eighty is a commercial corridor. As long as they dump out on eighty and they have a good transition, from what I understand with the buffers that they're requiring, that we require, that they're adding to, and the fence, uh, I do think we need to require those transitions to be part of the zoning if you approve it. But I have a hard, I would have a hard time if I had a vote saying no to B three.
The, uh, give me, talk to me about the, what type of, uh, what can you do in that buffer? You said where it's thinner, I mean, have you thought about the density of what you would plant to, to shed the, this project?
Not exactly, so, so normally when we do these things, uh, if it's thick wooded buffer, it's left undisturbed, and if there's a gap in it somewhere, then we plant back trees and shrubbery to fill those gaps in. Um, so, you know, that'll be part of the plan that's approved.
And what's the buffer we require now that's undisturbed?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Yeah.
And then, uh, ten feet in the front.
Huh?
Ten feet in the front, thirty feet on-
But eighty's not as big an issue as it is with the residential side.
So the, the fence would be on the, the actual property line, and then there'd be thirty-foot of-
Well, what we've got, what we've got shown is the, is the trees would be on the property line, and then the fence would be inside.
Okay, so the fence would be on the inside of the buffer?
Yes.
That's even better, I think.
Oh, so fence is gonna be on your property, not the property line?
Right.
And so the buffer would be after the fence?
Correct.
So they won't even have to see the fence?
Right, they won't even see the fence.
What kind of fence are you doing?
Um, we had talked about a chain-link fence, just for security. Um, but I mean, that's not-
Thing we can mandate is to style fence.
Six feet at least. I mean, I, I, they don't want residents coming into their property, so I mean, it's for security also.
I like the idea that, now, I don't know what the property looks like over there on Dogwood, uh, Way. Is that wooded, or is that, is it being cleared?
I, I'm not, I'm not completely sure. It's prob-
It is wooded now?
It's wooded now.
So it would be wooded for thirty feet, then your fence would start, and then your wa, your building would go up?
Yes.
Just so you know, basically our buffer is any trees over six inches diameter at crest height shall be retained, and additional plantings may be required when existing material is inappropriate for screening. So, so they understand it's got to be brought up to a screening standard, right?
So that, you know, you hear the complaints of the people don't wanna, I mean, I know you can't go in there and plant twenty-foot trees, but plant something that will fill in.
Right.
That is thin.
And, and the wetlands will be undisturbed as much as possible except for the small area where crossing.
And Tim, this is what I was talking about when we make those kind of requirements.
Yeah.
What's the process to make sure that the constituents are protected from that line of sight by?
And it, and since we're not, um, we're not acquiring, uh, any infrastructure on this, it would be slightly different than a subdivision, um, where, uh, we would leave that site inspection up, uh, to the, um, uh, to our in-house team on this before they would get a, um, a certificate of occupancy.
And, and on, on top of that, whenever we come back with the construction plans, we would end up showing a plan for the buffer. That would be part of the approved set of plans for the site.
With details for us with the plantings?
Yes.
Should we make, uh, if you, if you guys approve this, should you make it the, um, another condition for the board to approve the plantings? Let them come back and do the, do that with a second reading? Maybe not do the second reading, if you did approve it? You could come back and say, these are the plantings, this is what we would do?
Well, we, we hadn't surveyed the property, this is just rezoning. We hadn't got into the exact design, um, you know, of the, of everything yet either. So, you know, there's a lot of work that has to be done before we can actually say what we would, you know, propose.
So, on, on your site plan review, um, when we get those plans, um, prior to development, so, I mean, there's, you know, there's the rezoning, there's the sketch plan, uh, which is up next, and then, um, when they come to us with the final plan, assuming it's not a large deviation from what the sketch plan is, uh, then on, during site plan review, uh, we would be looking for all of those, uh, aspects. Um, those, uh, the buffers, uh, the, they'd give us a fencing location, they'd give us obviously pa, uh, pavement, um, uh, stormwater. All of that would be approved during, during site plan review.
And that's just with staff?
What'd say?
Site plan review is just through staff.
Just staff, correct.
And, and other governmental review agencies. So you're talking about DOT, Georgia Soil and Water, US Army Corps of Engineers?
DPH, because it's septic.
EPD, um, Health Department, um, all those guys.
And I can tell you, uh, there was a rezoning adjacent to where I lived that I had to step down because it was jointing property. It was on B three, there was, um, I think there was a text amendment to allow for automotive type finishing. It's not obtrusive, I mean, it's not. It, it, I didn't speak against it, or, um-
I will say I spoke with, uh, Ryan Thompson on the, uh, planning board, and I know they did deny it, but it was denied because it exited onto Dogwood Way. After this resubmital, I spoke with him, and he said, had that been the plan in the beginning, it would have probably been approved. Because it does, uh, empty onto Highway eighty, and it is across from property already zoned commercial. Um, this is the hardest part of our job. Balancing property rights with of this individual versus this individual. Um, if this had emptied into Dogwood Way, I couldn't support it because it would intrude the neighborhood. However, Highway eighty being a major route in and out of the county, and all that's gonna end up commercial over time.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that you hear from the owner of the, of the daycare center. I ask that you would give her a chance to speak.
He's welcome, he's welcome to.
That's fine.
Okay, you take, you'll take one minute, please, and just speak?
I don't want to take less than a second.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. And Mr. Forrest, how are you?
Doing good, good to see you.
I am Mary J. Hamilton. I am the owner of the property adjacent to this proposal, um, rezoning.
Is it right, now, show up here where her property is?
It's six ninety-nine right on the corner.
I know.
And the only thing that separates the property is the wetlands in between.
So you're right on eighty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's literally next door.
Okay. We've been blessed that fifteenth of this month will be there twenty-seven years.
Her property doesn't touch that property, though?
Well, she, it's, appears she has both parcels.
Oh, you have both parcels?
Pardon me?
You have both parcels there?
Yeah, we have the, well, it's four acres. One and a half is commercial up front where the daycare is, and the residential is in the back.
Okay, gotcha.
But anyway, the fifteenth of this month, we've been there twenty-seven years. And we've been blessed to have, um, children that have attended there, and they've been comfortable there with parents going to work with peace of mind that those children will be left there in safety. When they're out on the playground, I know the gentleman's proposing buffers around the property and a fence. Those kids are on the playground there, right? The only thing, like I said, the only thing that separates the properties, the trees and the wetlands. When we, my husband and I, um, first bought that property to develop it, we didn't know what core engineer and wetlands were. So now what's gonna happen with those wetlands now? Are they gonna be disturbed when they, they come in? They're not gonna touch those, still gonna remain wetlands. Okay.
They, they can mitigate the road part, but the rest will be, one thing I would require is that they do a core engineer delineation of the wetlands when they submit their sketch plan, because we've had a problem in the past.
Probably has to be a part of-
It, it's required because of the wetman, wetland mitigation.
Okay, I just know we had a development that was, that didn't do that. They gave us a sketch plan, when they got the core and delineated it, pretty soon they mitigated and changed and now they backed up to some houses that they weren't supposed to be backed up to.
What, what's shown is the, is the delineated line for the-
Okay.
Just make sure that's, core delineates that, and that's true, then they cannot affect the wetlands.
Okay, so that's, that's gonna be just left as is?
To be protected, that's what the core does.
Well, that was one of my concerns, because once they come in and that, um, was right, you know, expressed about flooding, you know, we experienced that too. We couldn't even get into the properties.
No, I, I agree.
If the O'Geechay comes up, it's gonna flood over there.
But then I've talked to Mr. Forrest several occasion. He mailed in the last time about a major accident that happened at Sand Hill and, um, eighty there. And Little Tots is sitting right down from Sand Hill. So if this, um, proposed industry comes in on the other side, ballin' naked, uh, traffic in there, these track trailers up and down eighty, that's gonna be a nightmare. You already have accidents occurring down at Sand Hill, and like, Dick Wright reminded him, and I, I, and emailed you the last time when we had the major accident down, and young man almost lost his life there.
Didn't, uh, whenever we were in Atlanta?
Yeah.
Isn't there, there's a roundabout coming at Sand Hill?
Under, under design that GDOT is building, correct?
The state is, is, does recognize that, because we have discussed it with them, and there is a roundabout coming at that intersection.
And they are also, for information, they're doing something on eighty with the, um, waystation to keep, because there's a problem.
Yeah, we understand trucks are cutting through there trying to bypass the waystation.
They've already done it, um, they, they, their issue was they, they didn't have a place to pull over the trucks who, who, uh, violated the, the, uh, avoided the waystation, now they've added these pull over spots at both bridges, um, uh, and, uh, on both sides of eighty, uh, so that they can pull folks over.
They're resolving that, so trucks won't be able to-
That's not working, I haven't seen them pull any trucks.
They just, they're starting to do it, resolving that, we just talked to them about it in January, and said, hey, you need to back up the waystation on sixteen, they said, no, we got another plan, and that's what he's doing, they're working another plan.
But I wanna see them enforce it, because I thought when they put the, Jimmy Delort's that was gonna divert the traffic out to sixteen, but it, it apparently not, but back on the daycare.
Yeah.
When those children are on the playground playing, I don't want the thought of, you know, what's going on next door is gonna affect their safety over there. Those parents bring those children in at sometimes six o'clock in the morning, so when those children go out for nap, they are due to get a, a nap, completely out, under disturb. With the in and going out of traffic right next door and that on eighty, I don't see that happening. So, those kids, some, I like, I was there the other Saturday doing some work, little girl been there, she grew up there. Parenting her, but they were going into Pooler, and she saw me, saw my van there, and they, she begged them to turn around and come back, because she knew that, you know, that's where she was, she was raised up at. And this is the kind of atmosphere that we've offered those children in Effingham and all the surrounding counties, and we wanna continue to offer that kind of service, where the children feel like that's another home, where they can come back. And not a nightmare of having all this, you know, traffic in and out and accidents. I've seen some really crazy stuff out there on eighty, I really have.
Thank you.
And I, I understand, and again, this, this is a difficult situation, should, say, let's say your daycare wasn't there, and now you wanted to, you purchased a piece of property, and you wanted to utilize your property for what you wanted to do, and people stood up and said, no, I don't want that, because people's gonna be bringing their kids in and out, all the traffic, so we have to balance that, I mean, this gentleman's basically trying to utilize his property just as you have.
I understand.
Um, that's the reason I'm wanting to find out more about this buffer, the fencing should keep any kids from, they should never get off your property, number one.
And the wetlands should not be going away, they're gonna still be there between her property-
Right, 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 her property's a little further, but I understand the concern, it's, uh, is this building with electrical company that's got, say, eight or ten vans, gonna add that much traffic onto Highway eighty? Highway eighty's already got, I don't know what the traffic count is per hour, I'm sure we can pull that, but it's a tremendous amount of traffic already.
I wanna put, um, in Pooler, West Side Business Park, Columbia Drive, um, there's a electrical company within there, a, a childcare, a daycare opened within that industrial park, and it's adjacent to that electrical company, and there's a tile provider, there's, uh, Ferguson Water Works has a facility, right next door, a, a battery wholesaler across, and they coexist fine, that, it, the, the daycare actually come in later and wanted to go there, I know that, um...
And I'm not speaking, I'm not trying to support-
And I'm not trying to convince, I'm just saying they're there.
I understand, I understand, but you know, I feel that-
But it's, uh, property rights, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I understand, I had the opposition too.
To, to deny, if he's trying to address ninety, most of the concerns, the biggest concern was Dogwood Way, and then the other concern was safety of the neighbors, so he's willing to put it, or there's gonna be a thirty foot buffer with added greenery or trees and a fence-
And a fence.
-inside the buffer of those trees, um, with only one exit going out onto Highway eighty, which any property owners got, has to have access to and from their property, um, I understand.
Yeah, I understand, because I, I look, I view Little Tots as a residential friendly industry, because we cater to-
Restaurant's pretty friendly to them.
It's pretty friendly too, yes.
I need to close this public hearing, it's getting late.
But anyway, I just, I just hope you, you know, deny, and for the safety of the children and the peace of mind of the parents and myself.
Thank you so much. All right, any other discussion with the board, or would you like to make a motion to approve or deny?
I, I, I hear the concerns, but again, it's hard for me to deny this with what's been proposed tonight. With that, I wanna make a motion to approve with the, uh, buffer and fencing as, as discussed, uh, the entrance only onto Highway eighty, there will be no access to, uh, Dogwood Way, and there'll be a traffic study done, uh, anyway, whenever they submit through the site review process.
Well, that, that would be required through GDOT.
Yeah. Is, can we, I would like, you know, we don't typically take a look at the, the review by staff, but is there some way that, I don't know if it has to come before the board, but I'd like to take a look at this, but, as it goes through the, the-
Think you can ask them to bring it back to the board?
Yeah, we can, we can order to see.
Item discussion.
Yeah, an item of discussion, yeah, we can bring it back for an item of discussion whenever y'all reach your point, you're satisfied.
To make sure it's, everything's satisfied, okay? The only additional condition which will avoid a second reading is, because they, they put into access Dogwood Way, and, and you're saying no access to Dogwood Way, only to eighty. Is that the only condition really we're adding, because the traffic study's gonna have to be done?
Yeah, and that's all listed in the, uh, stipulations anyway.
All right, so it'd be, if you make a motion to approve with staff-
Correct.
And plenty more recommendations, because they had recommendations other than just deny, right, or not?
Then you can have a second reading until the next meeting.
Right.
The staff report, um, we didn't, we received the, the, the new submittal, like, the day we were preparing to submit this all to the agenda, and we didn't change the staff report of the zoning map amendment, we realized that mistake a few days later, and did provide an updated zoning map amendment with the conditions, we removed any reference to Dogwood, but if you want us to reinsert that and say, no access to Dogwood, that's, we can certainly do that.
I think we wanna make sure-
Yeah, I wanna make sure there's no access to Dogwood Way.
So, um, the motion is to approve with staff recommendations, adding the condition of no access to Dogwood Way?
Yes.
That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper, all right, we'll vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing now knows it is passed, but we will not do the, uh, second reading until next meeting, where we'll approve with that condition. Does everybody understand? Okay. So that takes care of, um, thirteen, and then fourteen would do second reading next time. Item number fifteen, the planning board recommends denying an application by TK Electric LLC request to rezon six point two acres.
That's a second reading.
Yeah, we're skipping-
Oh, we're on fifteen, weren't we?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yep. And that took care of sixteen, I'm sorry, fifteen, I was on the wrong, fifteen and sixteen, okay.
Seventeen, isn't it?
So we're on seventeen, yep. Item number seventeen, the planning board recommends denying an application by TK Electric LLC for approval of sketch plan, located at seven sixty-three US Highway eighty to allow for commercial development, map number three oh two, parcel number one oh five in the, in the first district.
Mr. Chairman, are you able to proceed with your sketch plan because your second reading isn't done for the zoning of the property?
I don't see how we could.
I don't think so.
So that'll be table to, um, uh, five, what, what's next meeting?
Next meeting's on eighteen.
On four eighteen, okay. All right, eighteen and nineteen has been removed from the agenda, so number twenty, planning board recommends approving an application by the Carson Company Unlimited LLC as agent for Cynthia Roberts et al. to rezon twenty-six point six eight acres located on Old Augusta Road between Chimney Road and Caroney Drive, from A R one to R three, to allow for a multifamily residential development, map number four seventy-six, parcel number seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-eight in the fifth district.
So the proposal is to rezon this to R three, and under our new R three zoning district, um, we've worked with Ms. Hurst to, to get a, I'm gonna show you, a concept plan that you see in front of you. Now, I will note that during the planning board, it was noticed that this, this, the, the boundary of this sketch plan, of this concept plan, is not correct and includes properties down here that, that shouldn't be included, so that is currently being revised, and so the sketch plan had, was with, uh, tabled earlier-
Yeah, that's gonna be tabled to May second.
Yeah, so there's no sketch plan tonight, and this concept plan is purely concept, because it, it will have to be revised to, um, match the actual boundaries of the properties that Ms. Hurst is acquiring here, these are the three properties on Old Augusta Road. So, the pro- current proposal, which, which may have to change, is for, uh, one hundred and forty-three unit townhome development, and that would include a clump house, playground, common areas, and we've been, you know, talking through the open space requirements, and, and so we've-
It meets all the new R three-
This is our new R three.
...that we put in a few months ago, okay?
Yeah, so there, there is, when we initially met with, um, Ms. Hurst, there were actually only two parcels, and she was able to add another one to the development, and really, there's not a lot of opportunity for stub outs, but this, this kind of, there, there are stub outs sort of shown, but they really are essentially just internal cul-de-sacs. But that, we did have all the discussions of connecting to adjacent parcels, but she acquired that third parcel, so it kind of made that whole discussion moot. Uh, moving on, this is in the Rincon Sewer, uh, Service Delivery area, they have declined to serve the, the property, but Coastal Water and Sewerage has indicated that they have capacity to provide water and sewer services. Um, and obviously that will require, you know, follow up with EPD to ensure that the additional passing capacity are, are appropriate for this development, and will meet fire flow requirements. The gross density, so the entire acreage of twenty-six point six eight acres, the gross density for one hundred and forty-three units, which is really the max, and, and probably will have to be reduced, is five point four, so as you know, in R three, we do allow a density of up to nine units per acre, so this is much less dense than R three would actually allow in depend, you know, based on the configuration, these are, it's not an apartment, apartment building with multi-stores, with floors, it's, it's townhouses. Uh, at least co- four acres of common opens, outdoor open spaces required in this twenty-six acre, um, development site. A single entrance on Old Augusta Road is proposed, and as we, at the planning board, there was discussion about, first of all, that, that the, the boundaries were incorrect, but the main concern is that in, bringing this kind of density into a relatively low density area here, adjacent, there are R three parcels, and these are, I think duplexes, quadplexes, and it's not very densely developed at all, really. Uh, up here, we do see some R one subdivision, we have, um, AR one, AR two. This is the Baker site, RB Baker site, so this is down here in the lower right corner. While it is zoned R one, that's kind of an artifact of, of, of a long ago zoning, uh, decision, and it's really, it's essentially an industrial use. Ridge Crest here is residential, as we all know, then further south, we have extensive warehouse development. And of course, north, there's also Georgia Pacific and, um, some industrial activity. Staff are recommending approval, uh, the planning board.
So there's R three property in front of that already?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Does, the star property is what we're rezoning?
Yes, these are the three properties for rezoning tonight.
Pink, purple, whatever that is, that's already R three?
R two.
That is R three, that is R three, yeah. It's, that, that's a fairly old rezoning, and, um, you know, driving by, I, I really couldn't even tell that there was more than a few houses, and on the tax records, it doesn't seem like there's more than a few buildings, it's just very, it's, uh...
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, we'll open a public hearing, and have, listen to those who are speaking in favor of this first.
Yes, I'm Alice.
We're opening a public hearing, and those who are speaking in favor, uh, begin the discussion.
I'm Alice Hurst, representing the Carson Company, um, asking for rezoning for this twenty-six acres. Um, I feel like the rezoning that I'm asking for is sufficient for the area. You do have the three R three parcels to the left, um, you have a RV park, which it doesn't show on your map, but if you go right past seventy-seven A, there's the RV park, it's to the right, which is a B four? No, par four zoning, um, you also have the new church that's going on the corner. The duplexes to the left, I think there's two buildings there, I don't recall, um, but anyway, I feel like the rezoning I'm asking for is great for this parcel. I mean, I wouldn't try to put single family here next to an RV park and duplexes. It's centrally located for the new Seawan plant, I know a lot of people don't like multifamily, but we need it, we don't have anything on this side of the county, um, we do have the Leo, I think that's at the end of Old Augusta, but it fits perfect for what's around it, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor tonight? All right, anyone tonight that'd like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? You come forward and state your name and what your specific opposition is.
Yes, sir. My name is Charlotte Exley Johnson, and I've lived in, I live on nine 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 Chimney Road, Rincon, Georgia, and I'm proud to have been born, raised, and lived in Rincon area my entire life. I would like to thank our county commissioners for their leadership, dedication shown to improve our county and to lead our county forward with proper planning. Times are not easy for you to translate citizens' visions into long-range planning while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of our county's citizens. I attended the March fourteenth zoning board meeting after receiving a written letter requesting the zoning board to rezon twenty-six point six eight acres from AR one to R three, map number four seventy-six, parcel seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-eight located on Old Augusta Road. Ms. Alice Hurst spoke to the zoning board requesting the rezoning of this parcel. Ms. Hurst introduced herself and followed with the comment that she came before the board, zoning board and county commissioners to request rezoning property many times. This statement spoke volumes that it is a job, after, after this job is complete, she will move on to another project. All of the adjacent property owners attending the zoning board meeting are not, are, are not opposed to growth or development in our county, however, we do have a major concern with this rezoning request. Please ensure, as the citizens of Effingham County, our concerns of this rezoning request are met, and a few of those are, we asked that a forty foot buffer around the perimeter of the two, the twenty-six point six eight acres, Ms. Hurst stated twenty foot buffer was sufficient, however, the adjacent property owners disagree for many reasons. There is a proposed walking trail adjacent to the twenty foot buffer. This walking trail would be twenty foot from the property line, and without privacy fence or wider buffers would allow in, in uninvited people easy access to our property, especially young children. Excuse me, Mr. J.D. Scott has a pool near his property line, and it, and I have a pond twenty feet from the property line. Both pond and pool are adjacent to the twenty-six point six eight acres requesting rezoning. Please grant us, as Effingham citizens, the protection from, from and the risk of uninvited citizens on our property. As landowners, it is our responsibility to protect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens who are invited or uninvited on our property. We also request an eight foot privacy fence that the zoning board approved as recommended. For the, the reasons stated above, we ask that, that you, that the recommendation of a privacy fence to be installed in order for the zoning request to pass. If a privacy fence is not allowed, we would ask for an eighty foot buffer. The sketch plan has two retention ponds, dirt from the ponds is to be used to build up property. With this property buildup, water will run on adjacent property. Infiltration and runoff of stormwater through retention basin may increase the risk of groundwater contamination, especi- especially in areas where the soil is sandy. The soil in this area is sandy. A soil and drainage retention pond studies from the engineer could answer our questions and concern of groundwater contamination. All adjacent property owners are supplied by well water. And then we ask that you please rezon for freestanding homes, not multifamily homes called townhomes. We have several excellent reasons for, for this, that's fair to all parties and not just the self-interest. As I stated in our zoning board, history runs deep in our, in, on this land. It is our responsibility to our forefathers and our future generation to maintain the integrity of this land. The rezoning would be fair to all land and homeowners on, on Chimney Road and Old Augusta Road. The homes that are in the subdivisions are large parcel lands and have country atmosphere with nice sized lots and country style yards. Example of these subdivisions is Mill Creek, Ridge Crest, Hampton Creek, and Deerwood. These subdivisions have large manicured yards that complement our country lifestyle. Most of Old Augusta Road and Chimney Road homes are on large acre lots or tracts of land. Many of these homes have backyard farms and livestock. This atmosphere screams country living, and town, and not townhomes squashed together on little patches of land. Rincon has already established townhomes. The name says it all, homes in town, not country setting. The name says it all, homes in town, not country settings. According to the National Association of Realtors, townhomes do not appreciate in value like single-family homes. They tend to decrease in value faster and take longer to recover in times of market volatility. These, this, these worth has more volatile than single home, single-family homes. And these townhomes are permitted to be built. There is a proposal of one hundred and forty units. We were told that a subdivision could have two hundred units with one way in and one way out. Please allow me to voice the safety and the welfare for these residents. And a catastrophic, in a natural or man-made situation occurs, these residents would be trapped. The safety, health, and welfare of these people would be a tragedy in the first degree. Townhomes would sufficiently increase the traffic in this area. There are only two lanes at the proposed entrance. The center-turning lane stops before the proposed entrance. I do not know if our county commissioners have the authority to enforce D cell or X cell lanes at proposed entrance. If our county commissioners do not have the authority, we would request that DOT be contacted and ask for D cell and X cell lanes at this, for safety reasons. We know our leadership is dedicated to proper planning and improving infrastructure to lead our county forward with services designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the healthy environment for the welfare of our county citizens. We ask that our county commissioners to vote yes on our request and no on R three. These requests have, have a positive impact on long-term planning to encourage and promote high quality of life for our county citizens. And I have some questions that actually I took from your code of ordinance.
Listen, you've been there. I appreciate all your comments. I need to give you about one more minute because other people want to speak.
Okay.
And we need to move on. So, take one minute, and I'm gonna cut you off after that.
Okay. The rezoning proposal is described as, as, and this is in the, in her proposal, on her, it said, the rezoning proposal is described as uses and development, and I quote, "The property is going to look and feel like the neighborhood right off Old Augusta Road South," end of quote. This property described is Jasper Village on Old Augusta Road. These are rental homes with lease terms as short as five months. We ask that, that for you to allow this explosion of the growth in our county to be, to have a softer landing possible for our citizens. Townhomes, multifamily homes, residents will not be a positive long-term impact to the land. Please consider single-family homes rezoning. Single-family homes...
Okay, I, I think we got it. If you've got a particular question you want to ask, I'll take the question for the commission to answer, but we need to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. All right, is there anything additional? I took a lot of time, so I'm gonna give a couple more minutes for anyone else to speak.
My name has already come before this commission. My name is Jimmy Daniel Scotch. You just mentioned me. If you look at the screen up there, the greenery coming from right to left, just below the driveway, exactly right there, if you look very closely through all of the lines and all that, that's my house. The driveway entrance on the street over there, you can see it's just above my driveway. You can see the image of my driveway right there. I'm gonna be, from me to you, that's, that's the buffer when I go down my driveway. I look to the right. He's sitting where they're talking about the buffer ends. I, I don't know how many ways this cannot affect me negatively. I just, I just can't. They're talking about a fence. I'm looking at woods now. Don't want to step on anybody. There's... If you slide this upward so that the driveway actually hits the road where it's going to have to hit the road, it changes the entire picture. I, there's this thing in the back of my head that's just stinging me every time I think about it, that this image wasn't created this way on purpose to not convey the kind of things that I would, I would object to, to... I don't want to think there's subsidies going on here, but it just, I can't get away from that thought.
It looks, so you're saying your house is...
Underneath all that stuff that's on that drawing.
The sketch plan is wrong.
Huh? They knew that, you guys were aware of that the last meeting when we were here.
That's why it's not...
It was brought up then, and it hasn't been corrected.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the sketch?
We're not bringing it for correct, yes, I didn't bring it for...
Where's the property line then?
Uh, let me see if I can see it.
Right.
I live at the, where it says four-seven-six dash seven-nine.
That long driveway with the camper sitting in it.
That driveway along the blue line. The blue and the yellow line is my driveway.
What's, what's the required buffer on R three? Is it just twenty foot?
Well, R three to R three is...
And what's R three to the residential?
What's, what's your zoning?
I've heard tonight that my house is R three, but that's not something I know. I just heard it here.
Yeah.
It's a single-family property, four-seven-six dash seven-nine.
It's zoned R three.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I'm not here to contest that. It's just, that's whatever it is.
What's the, what's the buffer between the requested R three property and that four-seven-six dash seven-nine? What's the buffer that's supposed to be there for R three?
I think fifteen would be the minimum there proposing. And I did point out that the sketch plan has been pulled and will be resubmitted, but they were proposing twenty feet.
Yeah, we, that's what, that confused me.
Yeah, it's wrong, yeah.
I am not sure why we're looking at the same one we looked at the last time.
This is the concept, so we kept the concept for the rezoning application. The sketch plan application has been tabled for a month.
We pulled the sketch plan because they'll have to redo the sketch plan if the zoning is approved.
So, all of this gets...
So, there would be no more than twenty-foot buffer between this gentleman's property and this R three zoned property?
Twenty-foot vegetative buffer on the, on the new R three property.
And what's the setback from there that they have to have? How close can a, can a building be to that?
Minimum rear yard is fifteen feet.
Huh?
The rear yard setback for R three is fifteen feet.
From the property line?
Well, it'll be...
Well, how, how can that be with the buffer's only twenty feet?
Well, it's minimum, it's minimum, so it would be more.
So, they have to be at least twenty feet from the property line. That seems awful tight, though.
Okay, so for the rezoning, we just, we kept this because this is all we had. But for the sketch plan, when it's resubmitted, we'll have an updated, and I...
I, I get that. I'm, I'm asking how far would the buildings, Alice, you know, I'm asking, the buildings along that, this gentleman's property, how far would the back door steps, whatever, of these multifamily units be from his property?
Thirty-five, yeah, it's a deeper lot for the townhouse, so...
Twenty feet plus fifteen feet?
That's what I'm asking. I, I...
It's thirty-five feet.
When he gets to his property line, how far will it be before he would touch a, a home? Is it thirty-five feet?
No, in the ordinance, we have...
It's actually gonna be a lot more than that because of the greenery that's showing there.
It looks like it's gonna be a lot. I just don't know.
You have the backyard of the townhouse. I don't know the exact measurement of the...
Right, this is just a concept for the zoning.
I know it's just a concept. I just want to know how close that house is gonna be to his property, roughly.
How, the, the house to the property line?
The house to the property line.
Okay.
Not his house. Alice, what's your building there, wanting to build, those red buildings?
Yes.
From that back door to the property line, how far is it?
Ordinance is thirty-five between the buffer and the setback, but then I don't know how deep that backyard lot.
So, between the buffer, so you got twenty-foot buffer, then thirty-five foot setback?
No, fifteen foot setback.
It's a fifteen-foot buffer, R three to R three.
But we're doing a twenty-foot.
But there, but there...
Then you have another fifteen feet from the buffer to your building, regardless of what the zoning says. It's gonna be thirty-five foot.
That's what, thirty-five?
You're right. That's not what they're saying, though. They're saying it could be within twenty-five feet.
If they opt to create the buffer as a, as a separate parcel strip, that would actually create the thirty-five. So, that's one option there that could be a requirement.
Yeah, I got you. I just, I just...
So, the, the buffer is twenty feet, and if that's left on the parcel, and then, you know, the how, the, the buildings are at least that distance because our ordinance, the minimum is fifteen feet, so say that the, the building is built right there by the buffer. It could happen that, you know, residents in the future may cut back into that. One way to address that is to create a buffer strip that's its own parcel around the development, so that is an option to...
Or simply setbacks are from buffer lines.
From the buffer line, exactly. That would be another way. But to ensure that the individual property owners or residents can't...
You can set that in stone, a twenty-foot buffer and a fifteen-foot setback from the buffer.
Yeah, well, the set, the, the, yeah, I mean, the setback would be set in the ordinance. You would just say the setback would be from, instead of the property line, I guess, and you would measure from the buffer. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
When, when you look at that, clearly, the yard or the setback from the back is, is clearly much larger than the twenty feet. So, it's probably, but we, we don't have those measurements delineated.
I know, I just, that's what I was asking, Alice, to tell us how far it would be.
Visually looking at it, it looks at, you know, it looks sixty, but, you know, from the back of the house to the property line, it looks even more than that because you can see the width of twenty feet from the, from the top. But all that will have to be delineated.
Yeah, I just know there was one I was looking at this past week with development. It was like twenty, and I said, that's not gonna fly.
Right, and that, yeah, that's...
And I want to make sure this is gonna be more than the twenty.
That's right. And, and it, and it doesn't, it's not required to be more than the twenty, but they're, but they're going to...
Do it.
They, you know, you can make that a condition, certainly.
Transition to residential, yeah, okay.
In the north-south direction, it doesn't much matter to me because that's driveway. It's left to right from the four-seven-six to the left is the closest intersection to my house would be.
Okay, I think I understand. What, what else do you want to share with us tonight? Anything different?
I've written, I've written a note right here. My wife's trying to write things for me.
We're gonna take a couple more minutes, and then we need to have some discussion among the board.
Is this, is this well-inseptic on the county or...
She's, she's, the county doesn't have it, and neither does the city, so she's getting it from Coastal. Coastal has a public utility.
Well-inseptic.
No, not well-inseptic.
Water and sewer.
They got water and sewer. They couldn't do it if it didn't have water and sewer.
What I'm hearing is, by inference, is this should have no effect on my well and, and...
That's correct.
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever. And water cannot leave this project any faster than before they start construction. That'll be Georgia Soil and Water will certify that through the engineering studies.
How do we get information that, I'm sure somebody's gonna have to approve site plans and drainage and all of that, and the effect it is gonna have on the surrounding properties. How do I get that information when it's developed?
Tim, can you help me with that?
We, well, I'll say, as, as you pointed out, this is incorrect what they have on, on a sketch plan of it. So, they, they are gonna have to come back to us for approval on a sketch plan with the correct borderlines. That can deviate once they, once they delineate wetlands and figure out how, you know, the particulars of the property. But then that site plan will have to be sent, final site plan has to be sent to the county for review. And I would, you know, at, at some point, it becomes public, it becomes public domain to put up there, so...
Is there, is my question answered in there somewhere?
Well, I...
How do I get that information?
It's not available right now.
When it is available?
We don't have it.
Available. You can just request it from us.
And I do that by just coming to this building and find a window that...
They're gonna have to file, yeah, with her.
Perfect. That's perfect. Let me see if I missed something.
Okay. Let's hear from some, some other constituents, okay?
And just to clarify, Tim, I'm not certain, and now, I'm thinking about this now, buffers are actually based off of use, not zoning.
That's correct, and so, well...
So, if it's single-family use, it's probably is twenty-four.
That, that's a good point, and, and so...
Just make that clear.
Yeah, so... His property may be zoned R three, multifamily, but its use is single-family. So, that makes his buffer twenty feet rather than fifteen feet. This is well in excess of twenty feet anyway. But just, you know, just to kind of give you that example, if his property was used for multifamily as it's zoned, then, then technically it would be five feet less.
I got you, okay. All right, let this gentleman speak and give your name and what new information would you like to provide?
Yeah, I'm Jeffrey Jonas. I'm part owner in that apartment complex that, that's up there, that she's including in her property. We're here about a zoning request, and she is supposed to be providing that sketch plan to be able to show a good use of that property, okay? Well, it's an illusion for what she's got on that sheet, right? Because she's including my property and his property in order to show all that vegetation, okay? So, I don't know how you can use any of this information or that plat to sit here and make a decision on rezoning a piece of property. Now, as far as the density of it, when we built those apartments years ago, we were limited to building two units on two acres, a little over two acres of property, and that was the density that they were allowing, okay? We went back to build a third duplex, and they told, county told us no, okay? So, yeah, things change, but I'm not saying they're changing for the good, okay? And in that area, the density was being protected way back when, okay? Now, as far as traffic goes, being dumped out on that road, Old Augusta Road, I keep hearing is a truck route. The county had the opportunity to make that a truck route and make it the four-lane road that it was originally designed for, okay? And it was supposed to take all the traffic, truck traffic, out of Rincon and go around and come out on Ebenezer, okay? For some reason, it stopped, okay? It's the same thing about a lot of these other subdivisions going in. The infrastructure is coming after the fact, okay? That's where the problems come in with the county. And the commissioners, I hate to say it, need to slow this growth down, okay? Let the roads catch up, okay? And none of you can deny that problem, this county.
We don't deny it, but we are addressing it. We got, we have like four roundabouts being built on Old Augusta, widening it with turn lanes and so forth. That's gonna be done, Tim?
Um, that's under design right now.
Right, it's under design now, so it won't be that far down the road, yeah.
Let's look how long it's taken to do Effingham Parkway in that first phase.
That's a little different. That's a state-funded project. This one's all us, so we can control it.
And look at Old Augusta Road. That was, that was a joint venture between the state and the county, okay? It was, it was planned for four lanes, and it just got pulled back, so here's...
Old Augusta was never, never a partnership with the state.
We haven't discussed it in four lane.
I think just the right, and this was before my time, but I think the right...
Bought the four-lane right away when it was purchased. It has never come up four lane, but we have to, we have to, already bought it, the land for four lane, if we decide to do it.
It was sold to the county taxpayers that it was supposed to be a four lane. Oh, I...
You're wrong.
No, sir.
We can do it, we just can't afford it.
Well, I think what the previous... What the, what the previous commission...
I wasn't happy in that area.
Hang on, let me, let me clarify. We, we can't...
It was.
This is not the issue tonight. We need to move on.
Right away.
I got you. The, the previous commission in Forsite went ahead and bought enough right away for four lanes, just like the Parkway. They didn't design it the way they should have designed it, but we built, we bought originally enough right away for four lanes. But we have designed it, designed it in the middle, so we may have to get a little bit more. But we, or the previous commission bought enough right away for a four-lane, but it was never planned to be a four-lane immediately because we didn't need a four-lane back then. We needed another route. But anyway, that's, we're working on the transportation. We get the issues on that. So, what else are your concerns besides transportation?
I want to go on the record that the Parkway is not gonna be four lanes.
Right.
But it was, I can tell you, there were plats put up there in the meeting room, and, yep, four lanes, and it's supposed to go all the way over to Ebenezer over there, and that hasn't happened.
We can debate that all night, but...
Let's go all the way to one line, one-nineteen in Guyton, originally where it was supposed to go, if you want to get it straight.
So, what's the holdup?
Don't need four lanes right now. We need the two lanes. We need the roundabouts. Anything else you want to share with us?
No, I'll let them have it.
Okay, all right. One more, and then we'll close the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Toni Cavalli-Santoro. I'm here for myself and for my sister Carmen Cavalli. We own, and our family has owned property for close to forty years. We own, and our family has owned property for close to forty years on Old Augusta and Caroney Drive, Caroney, Carmen, Toni. So clearly, we've been there for a bit. Our family still lives there, my son lives there now. The biggest concern that we have, and prefacing these comments, we are no strangers to business, we're educated, we understand growth, growth is a good thing. Um, the type of growth is the piece that we have a concern about. I understand the developers and the real estate agent would not put single-family homes in that area, which is odd because after the RV park, which my dad owned and we received a year and a half ago, uh, because he passed, that is tucked back away from the road, you cannot see it from the road. Mill Creek and Deerwood both went in after the RV park, those are all single-family homes with average-sized yards front and back. There are multiple single-family homes, the only duplex or multiplexes are the two-fourplexes at the very end, which are from the eighties. And I could have sworn Jeff Mock's daddy built that, I don't know, maybe I was wrong.
It was Charlie Mock built that.
Charlie Mock, okay, so. Okay, so those are the only actual multi-housing sections that are there. So, understanding that if you present it in a certain way, that's the way it sounds, but to the first speaker, she made tons and tons of good points, it was very lengthy, so it was hard to pull some of those out, I apologize for that, that observation. But multi-housing from, and we own multi-housing in other cities. So multi-housing, we know, does not retain value the same way that a single-family home does, nor does it attract the same type of buyer. I don't know what the price point on these homes are, so that is a concern for us. But, and I apologize, I'm recovering from some throat surgery just recently, so I can't speak, I feel like I'm not very loud. But looking at the single-family homes, we know that our area is flooded with single-family homes. The devaluation of our property there is a real concern for us. Um, I don't know what that price point is, I don't know that there is a guarantee on what kind of, uh, quality building that they are going to have for those townhomes, that is, that is something that's in the back of our minds. We can't control the traffic, the schools, et cetera, you guys are supposed to address that. And from what we've heard, that is in the works. We are, like I said, we do have multi-family homes elsewhere, and we do lease those, we do long-term leases for two to five years. The only way that I think that property can be maintained correctly is if it is owner-occupied. I don't know that we can put a cap on if this passes, if we can have owner-occupied only or a very small percentage of rental or lease. So that is also a concern. Excuse me. Um, those are our big issues, this density is, is unlike anything else that is in the area. We understand it has, we need, we need places for people to come in, we need places for people to buy. But multi-family homes stacked in that close to everybody else where they are raising their own families with their front yards, backyards, ponds, gardens, chickens, this is not the answer. I implore you to please, if you haven't been out to that area, go and look, it's represented completely different than what it actually is. If there is an increase in, in the traffic there, I do understand that there could be an increase in, you know, two-lane, four-lane, what have you, that's not as much of an issue as the fact as the acceleration, deceleration coming off of chimney onto Old Augusta. You've got to run at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, so if you don't have a car that can get up to that in the first five seconds, I feel bad for you with the trucks that are coming down there. So now we're gonna add a hundred forty-plus additional cars, well, two-hundred eighty, three-hundred-plus cars, that is a concern for us. We just want to retain the feeling that we have with single-family homes, and multi-family homes packed in right on the edge is probably not the answer. So, I ask you just to think about it. And also, the fact that R-three, I don't think that zoning, from what we have understood, the zoning has not been addressed anytime in recent, the parameters around it have not been addressed anytime recently in terms of what can be required or what can be restricted.
We actually have, we put, we put a moratorium on R-three and R-six about a year and a half ago because we saw the, the wave coming, and so we have beefed up the, um, one thing that I share with staff on this, they need to make sure that the new recreational requirements there, the green spaces there, we beefed it up, you can't use the wetlands as the green space anymore. So the architecture has to be structured certain ways, to try to make a.
And I, we did read all of that in terms of like roof lines and.
Yeah, so we did a lot.
Parking.
We've done a lot with that to, to make sure that if, even if it was leased, you didn't have a person or owned, is even worse sometimes because the owned property roof goes bad and they don't fix the roof and it, there's three other units there that are attached to it. So you know what I'm saying? So we, we've addressed all that, we, we spent about a year, one that, with the staff and support, coming up with quality.
That's, we were just told today that it had, we were told today that had not been addressed.
I know, that's, we.
Okay, that, that makes me feel much better.
Remember in the paper, there was a moratorium that we had put, and, and some commissioners were concerned about putting a moratorium because we had Hyundai coming and growth and, and we said, we, we gotta get a handle on this. So we have revamped our, our R-three, uh, pretty much removing R-six and revamped it for R-five, which requires even on, on the single-family density where they can get five units to a lot. It requires a lot more green space, it requires a, um.
The idea was to incentivize quality.
Quality.
And that, you know, without.
And that's the, that's the hope.
So R-three and R.
I'm not saying it's perfect.
No, and nothing is, again, business owners, we understand, we, we multiple, you know, between four different cities, we have four different how, like residences that we live in, so I, I get.
If you compare our R-three and our R-six compared to our R-three and our R-five today to what it was less than two years ago, it's much better, and we did that, trying to put quality into those zoning.
How do we, I guess the question is, if, I am, again, we are strongly opposed to this, it does not fit the nature of the environment in that area. Growth is growth, big growth with a plan, as opposed to let's, let's stack it in, let's make a real estate deal, and let's develop it, and everybody makes money and goes home. Make money in a responsible manner according to the people that have been living there. I was sitting in the back, and I, very briefly, but I was sitting in the back, my phone was blowing up from all the residents at Deerwood because with Greenpeace RV Park, we supply water to residents in the local areas. And I would probably say eight different residences, because we didn't get notice, I don't know how she got a notice. In two of the other cities we live in, if any rezoning happens, we always get a postcard. I guess this is just posted, I don't know, but we did not receive notice and nobody in Deerwood was aware of it.
It's a distance.
Yeah, it's the distance, yeah.
Is it just?
It's two hundred feet from the property line that's being affected.
Oh, but it affects so much more than that. I get it, you got, you got, you gotta put parameters, but that's.
Which is why we also put a sign in front.
Public hearing to a close.
Yeah, but ultimate, ultimately, and yes, we do, we do, but I've been here for four hours, so I respectfully ask for another moment. The, the people in Deerwood are sitting there saying, we're retiring, this was our retirement plan.
They need to come tell us that.
They didn't know about it.
I'm sorry, you can't speak for them.
We, we were the ones telling them, and I feel like.
But you can't speak for them, they need to.
No, I, and you're right, I can't, but I can speak for the fact that it is not, it is not indicative of what, what is there now or what, anywhere around us is there.
I appreciate it, I'm gonna have to close this public hearing, though, thank you.
Well, I, I apologize for not being very, for not being tall enough for the microphone and not having the louden voice. I'm still healing, thank you.
No, sir, I'm gonna close the public hearing, it's been a long night, we've heard from everyone, I think the board's got a good assessment. No, I think we're good.
It's up to you.
No, I think we need to, I think we need to move on, is there any discussion from the board? I mean, we've had, we've had more time on this than we did on the five-hundred one.
I'm fine if you want to let him speak for a few minutes. Can you keep it short?
These names, these are just names of people on property lines of this property.
We've got a copy of that.
Microphone?
We've got a copy. We've got a copy.
Yeah, we got a copy of that.
Sir, you need to come to the mic if you're gonna speak.
I'm sorry.
And if you, if you, if, if all you're gonna do is point out that thing, we have that in our, in our.
This, yeah, this is a thing that Charlotte Johnson put out, the first one, yeah, the first one. And I got property owners, and by the way, the two-hundred-feet deal didn't fly either because of Ridgecrest at the corner of my property and their property is less than two-hundred feet, and they didn't get notifications. And I went over there and talked, these line of sight, that's the only ones I used, was Ridgecrest, they didn't get notified.
Okay.
So I'm just telling you, but the names that's on this list are just landowners, or, you know, husbands and wives, and landowners, except for maybe two. But those guys at Ridgecrest didn't get notified, because I, I personally went to each house.
We've got that, and I appreciate it.
And, and another thing, the.
Sir, we really got to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Public hearing is closed, is there any discussion from the board? Wish we could spend more time, but we cannot continue. Okay, you know, um, I, I know a couple of things, that landowners that have property, and you've said it before, Forrest, if you, if you really want to control land, you have to own it. So we, so we have to balance between a landowner's ability to use property at the highest use, and the same time, protect those properties around it so that when they use it to the highest use, there are appropriate buffers. We even put a, a, uh, moratorium on R-three and R-six, so we could go back and look at if there's gonna be density, which I'm gonna tell you, we need some density in this county, uh, because we have the manufacturers coming, we have the, the jobs coming, and I, I know people right now.
Another thing, the median house cost about, it's about two-hundred dollars a square foot in this county.
Yeah.
That thing, Phil sent me something, the median, the, the median sale price is about three-hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a, a typical three-bedroom, two-bath house. That's not affordable to a lot of people.
Yeah.
And I understand the townhomes, I've owned several and lived in several, I don't, I understand, not maybe what you want, but don't live there. I don't, I don't know, but, but there are people that want to live in these type, uh, homes. I mean, my neighbor, I live over in Honey Ridge, my older neighbor literally is wanting to purchase one because he can't keep up with a half-acre yard anymore. And then there's younger people, same thing, they don't want a big old yard. So we, there's gonna be townhomes in Effingham County.
And, and the question I think we have aboard is, is gotta make sure, that's why we put the moratorium in, and we did our R-three, to try to help get quality, if it's gonna be multifamily, if it's gonna be density, let's make sure it's quality. And, and my own daughter, she lives in a house that's on a, they're like four or five houses to an acre.
Dwayne is in Florida.
But, but her house is six-hundred thousand dollars, and she, she canceled the neighbor. Right down the street from her are townhouses, beautiful townhouses, and they don't diminish the value of her property. And I think that's the only thing I'm saying to our board, even though I don't have a vote on this, is that we, we have to make sure that we have zoning that ensures that developers like have come to us tonight will put the quality into it so we don't get a blight in our community, and we don't damage our property owners. If there's an opportunity to protect a property owner, uh, by putting, make sure that setbacks are far enough, the buffer vegetation's there, let's make sure we have a good transition between that residential and a multifamily or high-density. But, but this is something I feel like we need in our county, and I feel like the area could, if it's done right, it'd be good for our community, and I don't believe it would damage the property owners if we put those buffers and protections that we talked about for so many years in our discussions. But that's my two cents, is there any other discussion or a, a motion?
No, I, I, I'll just speak to it, um, I agree with what you're saying, I'm, I'm going back, I don't know how long, the family that currently owns the property, I don't know how long they've owned it, uh, it's, I would say a long time, I don't, do you know?
Yes, that has been their family for, yes, very long.
You know, so, so there's, 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 there's respect due there, um, and, and yes, we put a lot of work into the ordinance. I'd, uh, like to say we've, that, that work was for, for a positive. And, and it's tough, I mean, yeah, you hold up the paper, you know, with the, with the names, I get it, I, I mean, I've had stuff, I've, I've had a subdivision that actually backs up to my house that's gonna be rental homes. Do I love it? No, but it is what it is, you know? I, it was approved, I stepped down, didn't speak against it, and I'm, I'm living with it. But I'm, um, you know, I've heard, I've had some people say, you know, this, you know, developers just coming in town, pretty sure Miss Hurst has been here a long time, you know, so, you know, I'm, we put a lot of trust in people, and, you know, I just, I just have to do what I believe, and I don't, you know, the rest of the board can obviously, you know, make their own decision. But I'm gonna make a motion to approve alternative one, if the board sees fit.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one, which is to approve the R-zoning from AR-one to, to R-three, recognizing there had to be a sketch plan to come back and comply.
Sure.
To make sure it's accorded with our.
And I would agree, there's a lot of work to be done there.
A lot of work to be done on that, okay. Motion is second, so call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. So we do the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading with application by the Carson Company Unlimited LLC as agent for Cynthia Roberts et al. to rezonate twenty-six point six-eight acres located on Old Augusta Road between Chimney Road and Caroney Drive from AR-one to R-three to allow for multifamily residential development. This is map number four-seventy-six, parcel number seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-eight, in the fifth district. Motion to approve the second reading.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper to approve the second reading, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, the second reading passes unanimously. We cannot do the sketch plan because there's some work to be done on that one.
Is there a date certain on that?
And that's what, if you make a request, you get that, or, I think you had that gentleman, somebody wanted the information on that, just make a request and we can give you all the documents, but it may take a couple of weeks to get that back.
What, what was the date?
For the sketch plan?
Yeah.
It's the, um, May the second.
May the second.
At five P.M.
At five o'clock.
Yeah, we did that at the very beginning, I forgot about that with the agenda.
Yes, we did, we did. Yep, I've got it.
So, the sketch plan, sir, the sketch plan will come back to us on May second, so you might want to plan to be a part of that, just to, it's not a public hearing, but you can get the documents, we may have them available to you.
Five P.M.
That'll be at five P.M., okay. We have one final item, the planning board recommends approving the application by Angela Salz for a sketch plan for MS Storage Facility located at thirteen fifty-five Fort Howard Road, Zone B-three. Map number four-seventy-five, parcel number fifty-eight, B-oh-three, in the fifth district.
This proposal is to use a property that's currently zoned, is already zoned B-three, uh, to, the proposal is to add RV and boat storage to the rear. So on the image above, the blue is the existing business, and then the red in the back is the same property, Zone B-three, that is the proposed site of the RV storage. Uh, this is the exhibit, well, this is the sketch plan, um, for the proposed storage site. It, I'm gonna go back to my notes here, no access to Grace Lane is proposed, although because there is a power line easement, there will have to be access for maintenance, and that, that's something we're all aware of, we, we've had our pre-application meeting, that, um, our review engineers will be working with the design engineer to ensure that everything, that, 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 that pedestrian, you know, regular access to and from the site will not be allowed from Grace Lane, but that maintenance access will be permitted. The applicant proposes a chain-link fence around the property, thirty-foot vegetative buffer is required around the perimeter of the property that is adjacent to AR-one or AR-two properties, and that's to the south and across Grace Lane. So currently, the site does not have a lot of vegetation, uh, so this is the, from the rear, this is from Grace Lane. So vegetation will have to be added, and then this is the front view here. Uh, the current driveway will, is going to be the proposed access, so no new driveway onto, um, Fort Howard Road will be required. Uh, let's see, what else?
So access this property to Fort Howard Road?
Yes, there's an existing driveway for the existing business, so this, this new proposed business will just take advantage of that, um, driveway, so no new driveways, uh, and as it's storage, uh, you know, there's, there, there, of course, will be people coming and going, but it's, it's, there won't be, you know, daily deliveries kind of thing.
Just while you're getting roundabout, they'll come on Fort Howard Road.
So staff and planning board are rucking and, recommending approval, and there are conditions, though, that were added at planning board, and I, do you want to read them out? So shipping containers are not permitted on the site, that was a staff, um, condition, that was already there, just to be very clear that this is not for shipping containers, but then the planning board added, uh, two additional, a lighting plan is required, uh, lighting must be directed downwards and not towards nearby residences, and that was in response to a resident who is, uh, the gentleman here, their house is really close to the property line, so they did express concern about additional lighting impacting their, their peaceful enjoyment of their property, and as we. And as we, a thirty-foot vegetative buffer is required, but the planning board felt the need to reiterate that, and asked that it be added as a condition, so that's an end.
Okay, any discussion from the board?
I don't, I mean, it, make a motion to approve the sketch plans presented.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper to approve the sketch plan that's presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed, no. The unit passes unanimously. Of course, that's with planning board and staff recommendations, right?
Yes, sorry. That was presented, right?
That concludes our business for tonight. Is there anything else for the good of the order tonight?
We have.
This was the last meeting, so I don't need this one. I can't sign it in court here.
Second meeting is executive session minutes, and a motion to approve.
You want, oh, okay. Gotcha.
Everybody's got the executive session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Let me get to my page. Mr. Floyd made a motion, second by Mr. Kiefer, to approve executive session minutes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no.
Oh, they all say that.
Hearing no, no, the minutes are, executive session minutes for March twenty-first, twenty-three are approved. Is there any other business?
It's just for you to look at.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Loper, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, we are adjourned.